The normal work life, so.
All right, everyone. Welcome to the August 22, 2023, City of Grand Junction Planning Commission meeting. Couple of housekeeping items. First, agendas are available on your way into the auditorium. And second, please turn off or silence your cell phones for our proceedings this evening. In order to promote civil discussion and honor the right to differing opinions, members of the audience are asked to refrain from exhibiting expressions of support or opposition such as cheering, booing, yelling out, et cetera during our meeting this evening. Please note, members of the public as well as the applicant may be joining us via the web. We ask for your patience as we continue to utilize the hybrid system that allows us to ensure that all who want to participate in a hearing are able to do so. In addition, for items scheduled for public hearing this evening, a public hearing has also been conducted online at gjspeaks.org where information pertaining to the applicant's request as well as presentations were available. Comments received via GJ Speaks are reviewed in advance by the planning commissioners and are included as a part of the public testimony for each corresponding item this evening. Moving first to our consent agenda. Items on the consent agenda are items perceived to be non-controversial in nature and meet the requirements of the codes and regulations and/or the applicant has acknowledged agreement with recommended conditions. The consent agenda will be acted upon in one motion unless the applicant, a member of the public, a planning commissioner, or staff requests that an item be removed from the consent agenda. Items removed from the consent agenda will be reviewed as a part of the regular agenda. Consent agenda items must be removed from the consent agenda for full hearing in order to be eligible for appeal or rehearing. Is there a request from our commission to remove our sole item from the consent agenda this evening? I don't see any. Do we have a request from anyone else to remove our sole item from the consent agenda this evening? I don't see any of those either. So with that, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda? We've got a motion. Thank you, Commissioner. We have a motion. We have a second.
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 A motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Consent agenda is approved. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, to zero. Moving right along, public hearings are conducted pursuant to the laws of the state of Colorado, the City of Grand Junction, and the regulations duly adopted by this planning commission. The purpose of this hearing is to receive information and testimony from all interested parties to enable this planning commission to make appropriate findings and reach conclusions required to be made by law. Both the written and video recording are made of these proceedings. Those who wish to be heard must identify themselves by their full name. The order of the hearing will be as follows. First, an examination of the application and a determination concerning the adequacy of notice. Second, a presentation, description, and analysis of the application by staff. Next, an opportunity will be provided to the applicant to present evidence and argument concerning the applicant's request. Next, all interested parties may address the commission. Public comment is limited to three minutes per speaker. That does go quickly. The planning commission may ask questions of staff, the applicant, or members of the public after each presentation. Public comment section of the hearing may be closed after all public comment has been received. The applicant will be given an opportunity to respond or provide rebuttal if desired. Staff may respond to any statement made by the applicant, the public, or the commission. Chair will then close the public hearing and no further evidence will be accepted. The evidentiary portion may be reopened only by a majority vote of the commission. After closure of the public hearing, the planning commission will begin its deliberation, which will end with the passage of a motion. First item on our agenda is to consider a request by M&amp;D Enterprises for a conditional use permit to allow sand and gravel extraction on a total of 27.8 acres in a CSR, Community Services and Recreation Zone District, located at 2855 C and a half Road. Is our applicant here? There we are. You ready to proceed? All right. Staff, are you ready to proceed?
Yes.
Well, before we do so, was there required public notice on this item?
Um, yes.
And was that notice provided as required by the code?
As indicated in the staff report, notice has been provided in accordance with the code.
As we're moving into this, this matter has been partly heard once already, isn't that right?
Yes, this is basically a new hearing, though, a rehearing because of the benefit of full planning commission tonight.
Okay. So we're sort of starting over then for purposes of our hearing this evening?
Yes, I believe so.
All right. Well, with that, would you please introduce our exhibits for the record?
Uh, the exhibits would be my staff report dated today, August 22, 2023, uh, which does include a few comments that were provided on GJ Speaks. Uh, the second exhibit would be my, um, presentation tonight also dated today, August 22, 2023.
Are there any additional exhibits to be added to the record that aren't the ones you just mentioned?
Yes, I believe you were provided with, um, the GJ Speaks comments that came in for the July 11, 2023 hearing. That would be exhibit three.
Thank you. I think those were up here on the dais for us.
I believe so.
Commissioners, have you all seen those, had a chance to read them? Looks like we have. Anything else, other exhibits we need to add to our?
No, there are no more.
All right. Please proceed with your presentation.
All right. So good evening, Chair Tuskey and members of planning commission. I'm Kristin Ashbeck, Principal Planner with the Community Development Department. This is a request for a conditional use permit, or CUP, for a gravel extraction operation referred to as the C and a half Road gravel pit. The applicant is M&amp;D Enterprises LLC, represented by Austin Civil Group. As you noted, they are in the audience tonight. This is a vicinity map of the property outlined in red. The proposed gravel pit is located on the north bank of the Colorado River at 2855 C and a half Road. A conditional use permit for the mining use is required in the CSR Zone District. The current site condition is vacant agricultural land with weeds and grasses and ground cover and shrubby vegetation along the river. Some of the existing vegetation along the river has already been cleared in anticipation of construction of this segment of the riverfront trail. The site will be reclaimed to a groundwater lake and surrounding rangeland upon successful review of this conditional use permit. A Colorado Division of Reclamation, Mining, and Safety Permit Operation Application will be submitted to the state for this project. Colorado Revised Statutes Title 34 governs the mineral resources in the state. Section 34-1-305, Preservation of Commercial Mineral Deposits for Extraction, specifically states that no governmental authority which has control over zoning shall permit the use of any area known to contain a commercial mineral deposit in a manner which would interfere with the extraction of those deposits. Thus, the city complied with state statute when it zoned the property at the time of annexation to CSR, which may allow the gravel extraction. The CSR Zone District is consistent with the city's comprehensive plan as it implements the residential medium land use category that has been assigned to this property. The surrounding land uses include other vacant land and large lot, single-family homes, and all surrounding property is outside the city limits and zoned RSFR. Location of the operation at this site will allow the needed construction materials to be provided at a reasonable cost since it is close in to the development areas happening in the city and county. This is the site and excavation plan submitted with the CUP application. Note that on this one, the C and a half Road is to the left and the Colorado River on the right. So north is to the left. The operation will excavate, process, and send offsite construction materials from an 18.3 acre affected area to supply production facilities in the valley used for public and private construction purposes. The site will be mined over 10 years and day-to-day excavation will focus on a small area at a time that shifts around the site over time. The operations will include screening, crushing, and conveying equipment in addition to large vehicles moving the mined materials. Operations will begin at the south and move to the north end of the site, maintaining the required setbacks from the Colorado River. The top soil will be removed and stockpiled in burms around the perimeter of the site. Next, the sand and gravel will be mined and processed onsite using screens and crushers that are located in the middle of the site. No asphalt or concrete manufacturing will actually take place on this site. After the sand and gravel materials have been removed, the area will be backfilled, compacted, and regraded as depicted on the reclamation plan, including the establishment of the pond. Access for passenger vehicles used by the applicant's staff will be from existing C and a half Road. Hall trucks leaving the site will use that same access point. The primary haul route will then go west on C and a half Road to 28 Road, then north to Riverside Parkway, or east on C and a half Road to 29 Road. There will be no left turns allowed onto 29 Road from C and a half Road. This aerial photo illustrates the proximity of this site to the existing riverfront trail segments that are shown in blue. In addition to trail access at Los Colonius Park on the left side of the photo, there is another existing trailhead off 29 Road at the orange circle. There is just under one and a half miles of trail to connect the area between 27 and a half and 29 Roads, and the Colorado Department of Parks and Wildlife is starting work on the design of this trail segment. Much of the property is either owned by Parks and Wildlife or easements have been retained to construct the trail in the near future. This is the reclamation plan submitted with the CUP application. Reclamation will occur as portions of the permit area are mined. Final reclamation of the permit area will occur after all mining activities have been completed. Final use of the permit area is proposed to be rangeland with a groundwater lake for the benefit of wildlife or potentially recreational use due to its proximity to the riverfront trail. The post-mining land use will be compatible with existing land uses in the area but does not preclude the property from being rezoned and/or developed for residential use in the future. The reclamation plan also shows the location of trails at the red arrows here on this map. They will be constructed onsite per the city's active transportation corridor map. One trail is to run east-west through the site as part of the riverfront trail system, and the other will run north-south through the, on the west side of the site along an unnamed ditch that exists that's under the Grand Junction Drainage District jurisdiction. The city will require easements for both trails, and it is anticipated that the, it is the applicant's responsibility to construct both trails. It's anticipated that the north-south trail will not be constructed until the time of site reclamation, but an easement will be granted prior to commencement of the mining operations. Construction of the east-west trail along the river is anticipated to occur prior to reclamation. Thus, temporarily, a blanket easement to the city for trail construction across the entire 100-foot setback from the Colorado River is required as a condition of approval with the understanding a more specific easement will be granted to the city for the trail once an alignment is determined. If the city, state, or riverfront commission constructs the trail prior to reclamation, the applicant will still need to pay for the cost of construction of the portion that is on their property. The applicant may also opt to construct the trail themselves at any time after the design is completed if they so desire. In addition to the reclamation plan, a landscape plan for the site has been submitted which indicates planting that will be established during the mining operations, including the provision of required street furnished landscaping and areas of natural vegetation to be undisturbed and retained. The criteria for review of a conditional use permit are listed here. To address criterion one, the site and associated plans included with the CUP application indicate that all standards of the CSR Zone District will be met. This proposal includes a concurrent site plan review that will ensure compliance with district standards. The proposed gravel pit will operate from 7:00 a.m. to 5:30 p.m., typically Monday through Friday. However, there are infrequent needs to provide some flexibility to work later into the night or perhaps on a weekend to accommodate project work schedules. Solid and liquid waste will be managed through the stormwater management plan and the spill prevention control plan that will be created in support of the state permit and the site plan review. Staff finds this criterion has been met. Addressing criterion two, the proposed gravel pit is near similar mining operations with proposed improvements to C and a half Road. The transportation infrastructure in the area is adequate to support the operation. Staff finds this criterion has been met. Criterion three is primarily addressed by the setbacks from the permit, from the permit boundaries, perimeter burms, and screening fences that will protect the privacy of adjacent properties from the operations. Given this analysis, staff finds this criterion has been met. As far as criterion four, the code contains numerous standards and are covered in the following slides. Criterion four of the CUP review is compliance with site-specific standards in the code. For a mining operation such as that proposed, there are numerous site planning and operational standards to be met as discussed in the staff report. A traffic analysis was provided with the CUP application, and access to the site will remain a single point on C and a half Road at approximately the same location as the existing access to the site. Prior to approval of plans to begin the operations, the applicant will pay its share of the cost to make improvements to C and a half Road. The city and Mesa County will share the remainder of the cost. The U-specific standards go on to state 26 more standards that are analyzed in detail in the staff report, so we'll not go over them tonight. Extraction operations have been described in the general project report and the associated maps submitted by the applicant. The further detailed, and further detail will be in the state permit application when they, or if they're able to proceed with that. The required setbacks, vegetation, slopes, drainage, and fencing are appropriately addressed in the application we've seen thus far. The last of the U-specific standards are summarized here. Again, analysis of these are detailed in the staff report and the application materials which adequately address the applicable standards. Staff finds that the U-specific standards for a mining operation such as this have been met. After reviewing the request for a conditional use permit to establish a sand and gravel extraction operation on the parcel located at 2855 C and a half Road, staff has found the application meets code criteria and standards and recommends approval subject to the conditions that are summarized here. That concludes my presentation, and staff will entertain any questions from the commissioners. I do have joining me tonight Trenton Proll, who's the Director of Public Works for the city, Scott May, who is the Mesa County Public Works Director, and Kathleen Fisher with the Colorado Parks and Wildlife Department in case we have questions that raise concerns that they may be able to answer.
Thank you, Ms. Ashbeck. Do we have questions for staff?
I do. And these are really actually just trying to get confirmation, but in reading the staff report, I want to make sure I understand it correctly, but it looks pretty clear. There's a Colorado Revised Statutes in Title 34 indicates that just the, the city or any government jurisdiction cannot impede or impose anything that wouldn't allow zoning to not do the gravel extraction, right? And I guess while you're looking, if we're turning to legal on that one, and I'm just kind of looking at your, at your staff report here. The next question then is, is here we are for the CUP, which I'm interpreting that legal stance to say that, you know, look, we can't, we can't necessarily halt this from happening, but maybe looking at what that application is and the proposal on how they're going to mitigate any impacts as we go through this. Is that, is that kind of a correct basis of what we're looking at from the legal standpoint?
I believe the staff report actually has the quote in it from the section of the state statute that you're referring to. And basically, it would be saying that, yes, we can't prohibit it from happening, but it would be an approval for something separate from what we're doing tonight. You're not doing the zoning, and you're not approving something else that would cause it difficulty. I will check that and confirm and then check back with you in just a few minutes because I didn't have it up on my computer, but I'll confirm that that's the information under that section of the state statute.
Great. You've hit on exactly where I'm coming from on what applies to tonight versus other processes in terms of how our hands are or are not tied. Thanks. That's all I had at this time.
Do we have other questions for staff?
I have a couple technical questions, one on the criteria, just because this is different than most of what we see which are rezones. Do all four of the criteria have to be met in order for us to go forward with the CUP?
Yes, for CUP, I believe they are and rather than or. So all of them need to be met.
Okay. And then the second question I had, could you just go over really quick again the trail as far as what your understanding is, is when the east-west trail? I know you said the north-south one will be complete at reclamation. And when the east-west, what was, when is that intended on being complete?
Well, we may defer that to our Public Works Director and others, but my understanding is that it's imminent. I think we're in negotiations with the final property owner for easement. The trail is starting design. Once it's designed and we have the full easement, construction would begin, and I believe it's anticipated 24, 25. Maybe Trent can address that.
Thank you, Kristin.
Thank you, Commissioner Weckerly and Chairman Tuskey here. So the, I'm Trent Proll, Public Works Director here with the city. And so, you know, we're, we're excited. After the 28 years that I've been here, we are as close as we've ever been to actually bringing the, bringing the trail to fruition. There are two properties left. One is the one that's before you here today in regards to getting the necessary right-of-way and easements across, across this parcel, and then one further to the west that Colorado Parks and Wildlife, Mesa County, and City of Grand Junction have been working very hard with the, with the family who has the, who has the property. And they have, they, we believe we have an agreement where we'll be closing with them here at the beginning of January. Next week, we select, I'm on the selection team with Colorado Parks and Wildlife staff to select a consultant that will design, design the trail from the eddy, where it left off there, all the way over to 29 Road. And that design is anticipated to be completed about March, April timeframe, but will be far enough along in time for February application to Great Outdoors Colorado for funding for the trail. So ideally, if everything came together, we'd be under construction late 2024 with opening sometime in 2025 for the trail.
Thank you.
Do we have other questions for staff? Go for it.
Thank you for your presentation. I just have just a curiosity question. Why does the site plan extend into the river?
That was point of contention at annexation, but that is where the property line was determined to actually be, is in the river.
Okay.
Somewhere in the river.
But there's no, like, there's not going to be, the, the trail will be there and the setbacks. I was just curious.
The setback is from the bank, not from their property line. So there is that hundred-foot of bank that's available for construction.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner.
Thank you for your presentation. I just have one question. On the criteria of compatibility with adjoining properties, when I look at that, it has three sections, and you address the protection of privacy section, but there's also a number two that's protection of use and enjoyment, which would require the plan shall be designed and arranged to have a minimal negative impact on the use and enjoyment of adjoining property. And then there's also a number three, compatible design and integration, which states that all elements of a plan shall coexist in a harmonious manner with nearby existing and anticipated development. Could you comment on the staff's position on those two?
Yeah, staff's position is those have also been met. I just mentioned the privacy part of it, but by virtue of what we've seen from the reclamation plan and the operation plan and how they will proceed with, with the operations on this site, I believe that all three of those have been met. And then certainly there will be some more detailed requirements that the applicant perhaps could address in greater detail, but with the state plan or the state permit, that would also address those requirement, that kind of requirement.
Thank you.
Any other questions for staff?
Mr. Chair, if I may, I've found that section of the state statute. And yes, excuse me. You could not take official action or inaction that would permit the use of any area known to contain a commercial mineral deposit in manner which would interfere with the present or future expectation of such deposit by an extractor. Your action tonight is not to allow someone else to take action that would cause a problem for the future use or present extraction of the mineral deposit. Instead, you're being asked just the opposite, to allow for the extraction to take place with the approval of the CUP.
All right. Do we have other questions for staff? All right. Our applicant is here, I know. Do you have a presentation for us this evening? Looks like it.
Good evening, commissioners. My name is Mark Austin with Austin Civil Group. We're representing the applicant, M&amp;D Enterprises LLC, on this conditional use permit application for a gravel pit on approximately a 25-acre site just south of C and a half Road and north of the Colorado River. Just to kind of back up a little bit and just kind of explain when we started this, kind of give everybody a little bit of a timeline of, of the progression of this project. We actually met with the City of Grand Junction for a general meeting for this gravel permit back in April of 2019. And at that time, we decided to move forward with the gravel permit application and one of the first... And at that time, we decided to move forward with the gravel permit application and one of the first steps is to have a neighborhood meeting. And so we actually had a neighborhood meeting in July of 2020 for the annexation, the rezone, and the sand and gravel permit operations with the neighborhood. And at that time, the comp plan called for this property to be residential estate. And that was the zone district that we presented at that neighborhood meeting that we wanted to rezone to, which also allowed sand and gravel mining operations. Because at that point in time, what we had presented to the neighbors is that we wanted to do a sand and gravel mining operation. We wanted to leave an open lake and look at constructing maybe three or four houses along the lake for a, for long-term solution on that property. So that was, that was our neighborhood meeting. And then in December 2020, the comp, the new comp plan was adopted and it kind of drastically changed that vision. The 2020 comp plan changed the zoning options to residential medium, which were basically 5.5 units per acre to 12 units per acre. And it did allow for the CSR zoning, so that was our avenue to go back to the neighbors and say, okay, now we've got to regroup. We've got to have the CSR zoning. We're still planning to do the sand and gravel mining. So we actually had that neighborhood meeting in June of 2021. Our submittal for the CUP and the zoning application came in in July of 2021. We had a planning commission for the annexation and zoning in April, or excuse me, September of 2022. And council hearing on October of 2022. So we had a, kind of our first dance at a planning commission hea- hearing on this back in July, and so here we are tonight. So this has been a, almost a four-year-long process that we've been working on for this particular piece of property. Kristin did a good job of kind of outlining the requirements in the code for sand and gravel mining operations. But I wanted to just touch on some of the technical aspects of that. And again, these U specific standards in the code are the, the regulations and the rules that we're supposed to follow that allow us to do a sand and gravel mining operation. And it's your guys' job to determine whether we've met those or if there's additional measures that need to take place. I want to focus on the, and I heard Kristin say there's 26. I counted 24, but there, there probably is 26 requirements in that provision of the code. And I'd like to just kind of touch on some of those to kind of help everybody understand this process, why it's taken so long and, and the level of effort that's gone into this project to date. So the, the first provision or, or you, under the U standards is to obtain the state permits, air, water, mining. And again, the CUP permit process tonight is basically the first step in trying to get that sand and gravel mining operation completed. We still have a year-long process to go through the state for the sand and gravel mining operation. Then if we're successful at that, then we've got to back up and do the air permits and the water permits and everything else for the sand and gravel work. So we still have a fairly long road to go to get all the permits in place, assuming we're successful here tonight. But I just want everybody to understand that this is not, this is a long process and we still have several steps and a lot of reviews still to go through. Criteria number two in the, in the technical standards states that at a minimum, we have to provide a 30-foot buffer to adjacent property easement and irrigation bitches. What we're proposing to do is we're proposing to provide a 10-foot tall buffer along the street frontage and the adjacent residential properties. And it, excuse me, a 10-foot high berm, I think I said buffer. And in order to create that 10-foot tall buffer with three-to-one slopes, we're going to need a footprint that's at least 60-foot wide. So I, I wanted to point out that in constructing this 10-foot tall berm, which isn't a requirement, but what we want to do to help screen the operations from the adjacent residential neighbors is, you know, that buffer, we're doubling that buffer requirement to the adjacent properties with that 10-foot berm. The berm that we're going to provide, in addition, I think Kristin showed you guys the landscape plan that showed the landscaping and all the street and trees and shrubs along C and a Half Road. But we're also going to be landscaping the sides of the berms that face the properties along those residential areas. There are some limits that how far we can go to the south because of some floodplain requirements. But all of the existing residential properties will be screened with that minimum 10-foot tall berm. They're going to have landscaping, seeding on that berm, irrigation. So it's going to be a visual amenity, not just a pile of dirt that they're going to be looking at. Criteria number three is we have to provide 125-foot excavation buffer and 250-foot separation from the crusher equipment to the existing homes around the property. And we also have to ensure that we don't generate noise higher than 65 decibels at the property line. We have five residential properties and, and I'll get, I'll, I'll pull up a map here at the end to kind of show those. But we've got five residential properties that are adjacent to this gravel pit. The 125-foot setback, we, we've provided that on the west side of the property, which is the Bradshaw residence. All other properties are at least 200 feet away from that. The 200-foot crusher setback, we are fine with meeting that requirement. And again, between that 10-foot tall berm and materials that end up getting stockpiled on the property, the sound is going to get attenuated from the adjacent neighborhood properties because of those facilities, which again helps us ensure compliance with the 65 decibels at the west property, or excuse me, at the property lines. Criteria number four is 100-foot buffer from the wetlands or navigable watercourses. Again, Kristin talked about this a little bit as well. We're providing 100-foot buffer along the Colorado River and also providing the trail easement and the trail along that river corridor. Number five is existing trees, vegetation where practical shall be preserved in the buffer areas. Again, that's going to be along that river corridor. We're not disturbing that 100-foot buffer section at all. I want to point out though, that the Colorado State Forestry Office, and I could be wrong on the specific agency, but they actually did fire mitigation work along those trees in that corridor. I believe it was within the last six months at nine months or so. And they actually went through and cleaned up a lot of the undergrowth in this area. So there's been cleaning operations in that, but that was done as part of the State Foresters Office for Fire Mitigation. Condition number six, traffic analysis. Again, the, the code requires that we hire or we provide a traffic study prepared by a registered engineer in that discipline. We provided that traffic to the city. The city came back and had some comments which we addressed. But the, the gist of it is, is that our gravel pit operations, we've got three workers that were going to work there. On average, we have five medium trucks per day that are going to be coming in and out of that facility. And those are typically a dump truck, a small, a, a smaller dump truck that you see on most construction sites. And we've got five larger gravel trucks. So basically, we have 10 gravel trips per day coming out of that sand and gravel operation. It's pretty low. According to our traffic study, C and a Half Road currently has peak hour volumes of 65 in the morning and 56 in the afternoon. When we add the gravel trip, gravel truck trips into there, that increases to a total of 77 trips in the morning and 68 in the afternoon. The transportation engineering design standards that the city publishes provides a table that indicates what the capacity of the various road sections in the city are. And so we then use that criteria to determine, okay, how many trips are on that road versus what is the capacity of that roadway system? C and a Half Road is classified as a collector's street. And the capacity of that collector's street is 1,100 vehicles per hour. And our project is adding 77 in the morning and 68 in the afternoon. So our capacity of that road system, we're using 7% of the capacity of that current road system with the sand and gravel permit operation. So again, it's a pretty low number of traffic on that street. It's a level of service A. And again, that study and analysis comes directly out of the transportation and engineering design standards published by the city that we complied with. The other thing that we looked at was pedestrian bike traffic. We actually did counts again this week. And in the morning hours, peak hour, there's one pedestrian that we identified. In the afternoon, peak hour, there were two pedestrians on C and a Half Road. Bicycle traffic in the morning, PM peak, there were 15 bicycles on that road. And in the afternoon, there were three. And again, that's the peak hour counts of this last week. Number seven criteria is the public works director may restrict use in the right-of-way and/or address upgrades. C and a Half Road to 28 to Riverside Parkway is, is the primary route. There's no left turns that will be coming out of the gravel pit operations onto 29 Road. Public Works has requested that we pay $155,000 fee to the city to help do street improvements for C and a Half Road. And the city's going to require dedication of the trail easement and trail construction along the river and the no-name drain. That's the trail systems that you saw in the reclamation plan. And again, that's, that's roughly a, an additional $200,000 cost to this project that the city will not have to pay for. Number eight is haul routes maintained by the operator. Again, we're agreeable to, to make sure that those haul routes are cleaned and maintained. Hours of operation, the code says that the hours of operation are restricted to 6:00 AM to 6:00 PM. Again, we've throttled that back because of the neighborhood area that we're working in. And we're proposing our work hours be from 7:00 to 5:30 PM, Monday through Friday. And again, we, we touched briefly that there may be some periods where there's night or weekend work that's needed. And the, the main reason that comes up, it primarily, it's because of city or county projects that mandate construction happen at night or during off-hours. And the reason we need access to that gravel pit is it could be a water line break, it could be a sewer line work where we need to go in and get a load of sand and gravel to finish construction for whatever activity is going on. Or in a lot of cases, what it is, is it's unsuitable material that can't be used for the rest of the job site that we've got to have someplace to take and, and dispose of while it dries out or get rid of it. And so we need access to these gravel pit areas to, to support cities' requirements for doing construction work at night. Again, the contractor doesn't want to work at night or on the weekend, neither do employees, but it's typically city or county-driven for those type of requirements and projects. Number 10 is some slope criteria for the excavation pit area. And again, we're completely agreeable for those excavation requirements. We can't increase drainage or impacts on adjacent properties or facilities. Again, we agree to, to make sure that doesn't happen. The dra- the drainage within the gravel pit area actually falls into the mining permit, and so it's all kind of self-contained anyway. Number 13 is the site can't be used to stockpile materials after mining is completed and reclamation needs to happen as quickly as possible. Again, we're in agreement with that requirement. Number 14 is comply with noise and vibration standards of the code. We're definitely agreeable to all of those requirements. Emissions by city and CDPHE standards, we're agreeable with. I'm going to kind of just skip through all, all the rest of these conditions. We're, we're in full agreement with, with, on, with the staff. Timetable for reclamation, again, typically it's either a three-to-five-year period. We've agreed to try to expedite that to a two-year period. Again, it could be cap and quicker. It just kind of depends on how quickly the mining resources or the sand and gravel resources are used up on this facility. Development schedule, if we don't meet that schedule, the city has the revive, the right to revoke our permit. So again, if we do not comply with conditions of approval, the city can stop our operations immediately. The reclamation work still has to happen. And so it, there is protection there for the public and the city. Signage required for public safety and perimeter fencing, again, we're all in agreement with those conditions. So the other conditions, I, again, this was, this is just for the first step. The second step is going through the sand and gravel state process to get the permit approved. This is kind of an outline of just the major requirements that we're going to have to deal with, with the state. It's, it, it's, it's an intensive process. It's highly, there's oversight from every state agency imaginable. It's, it's going to take a year to get through this process. Oversight and accountability, again, planning commission and the city has the ability to revoke this permit if we don't violate, if we don't comply with any of the requirements. Each year, the operator must submit to the state of Colorado an annual report with a map showing extents of disturbance of affected land, reclamation accomplished to date, and new disturbance areas. We have financial warranty requirements with the state mining board to make sure that our reclamation permit is adequate to cover the work that's in place. Mining operations will be inspected a sufficient number of times each year by the state to ensure compliance with permit laws and division rules. Any one of these agencies can stop this operation immediately. I wanted to kind of give an example of what a 10-foot high berm potentially looks like. I tried to find an example that hopefully some of you may be familiar with. This is actually the Yoot Water Grand Valley Power site off of 22 Road. This is an eight-foot high berm that we did for that project several years ago. And you can see from the street, you have no idea what's behind that berm. But if you look at the air photo below, you can see it's an outdoor storage yard full of transformers, power poles, all the building area. But driving in your car, you have no idea that's what's located behind the berm. The berm we're proposing is actually another two feet higher than that berm, just to give everybody a little perspective. I, I, I know that in the staff report, there's several neighborhood concerns that were brought up. And I wanted to kind of touch briefly on, on some of those issues. Traffic, again, our, our sand and gravel permit operations, we've got 10 gravel trucks per day. That's, that's what our impact to the roadway system is at. With that, it's a 77% capacity of that roadway. Dust and noise mitigation, again, we've got the 10-foot tall berm with irrigation and vegetation. We've got a 60-foot buffer. We've got material stockpiles within the site to help buffer additional noise from crushing and mining operations. This gravel pit is going to be a wet pit, meaning the groundwater table is in the sand and gravels that we're removing, so they're moist. That helps tremendously with dust mitigation on stockpile materials and people coming in and out of the site because those materials are already damp. And so the dust issues are pretty minimal in these wet sand and gravel mining operations. Again, with the noise and dust, we've reduced our hour of operation of what's allowed by the code. And we've expedited our sand and gravel mining operations to a 10-year period. Most of the time, these mines are a 20-year life cycle. We've cut that in half. Destruction of wildlife habitat, again, we've provided the 100-foot, excuse me, 100-foot greens, green belt setback. greens, greenbelt setback where the river trail's going to be located. There's going to be a lake on this property when this project is completed that's going to be awesome for wildlife habitat. And actually, during the review process for this application, the Colorado Division of Parks and Outdoor Wildlife, I probably butchered the name, but again, they reviewed our application, and their comment in the report was the pond will greatly benefit the wildlife. So again, this facility is going to be wildlife-friendly. Safety and pedestrian traffic and bicycle traffic on C and a half road. Again, the peak hour counts for peds and bikes are pretty low, especially on pedestrians. There's just, there's no facilities there. So I doubt it's comfortable for most people to walk on it. There's fifteen bicycles in the AM peak hour and three bicycles in the PM peak. And again, I think hearing from the Public Works Director, Trent, it sounds like the river trail construction is actually pretty close to fruition. And once that trail construction is done, those bikes and ped, or bikes are going to be on the river trail, hopefully. C and a half, some of the other comments were C and a half road is in poor condition. I think everybody in the room can agree that that road is severely neglected. There's obviously been a lack of maintenance, long-term maintenance, and there's been very little improvements or upgrades on that road system. I think part of the issue has been that C and a half road is kind of caught in a little bit of part of its county, part of its city. Nobody's really taking control of it. I think honestly, this project, I think, helped push pulling the county and the city together to come to an agreement for taking care of maintenance issues on the street. Trent Prah can maybe talk to that further, but the agreement that we sat down with where they asked for the hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars from our project, that was kind of a joint project with the city and the county participation and with our petition portion of that being the hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars. I know there's several comments that the gravel pit isn't appropriate for this area. And again, Kristen pointed out that as early as nineteen-seventy-eight, this area was identified as a sand and gravel resource area. The Pear Park Plan clearly identified that this was a sand and gravel mining resource area. And so again, I think we're in compliance with those requirements. So in summary, M&amp;D Enterprises, they currently operate four other gravel pits in Grand Junction and Mesa County. They've got a proven track record with the city and the county since two thousand when we did their first gravel permit off of, over by the Persigo Waste Water Treatment Plant. City projects, again, are by far the largest user of the sand and gravel materials that are produced in these facilities. The M&amp;D Enterprises is associated with MA Concrete Construction. They do a significant number of projects with the city. MA Concrete did Canyon View Park, Los Colonius, Dos Rios, Horizon Drive, Twenty-Five Road, numerous city sewer, water, and storm sewer projects. Again, if this gravel pit would have been up and running when Los Colonius and Dos Rios were under construction, this gravel pit would probably have been mined out in less than five years. Again, we have ten trucks per day average. We've got a ten-foot-high landscaped berm, sixty-foot buffer, reduced hours of operation, quicker timeframe to reduce impacts to surrounding neighbor and property owners. One other thing that's interesting with this site is this site that is fully in the one-hundred-year floodplain, and the back one-third is in what's called the floodway. And the floodway is an area where you can't build anything at all. So a sand and gravel pit, it leaves a pond at the end of the day, from a floodplain management perspective, is a win-win for the city, because there's no resource damage if a flood were to occur. The comp plan, again, I just wanted to point out that the comp plan calls for this area to be residential medium density, which is five-point-five to twelve dwelling units per acre. If we were to develop this for a residential property use, at a minimum, there would have to be a hundred and thirty-eight dwelling units and up to three hundred dwelling units on this property. And the traffic that would be generated as a result of even a hundred and thirty-eight dwelling units on C and a half road would far outweigh the ten trips per day average that our sand and gravel mining operations are proposing. And as Trent pointed out, this is one of the two properties still left for this trail easement. So again, we're excited that we can partner up and make this vision happen for the city. And also, you know, it's going to save the city roughly two-hundred thousand dollars in construction costs just for that trail alone. Again, here's just kind of more of a colored aerial photo background of the sand and gravel mining plan operation. Kind of gives a little bit better perspective on kind of what some of the adjacent homes and properties are. You can see we've got a residential home, the Bradshaw Residence on our west property line. We've got some homes along C and a half road that are setback off of there a little bit further. And then we've got the Daniels Property that's kind of to our east, and those are the residential properties that we're impacting. I wanted to point out that the improvements in our berm that we show kind of end right here, and that's because the area closer to the river, all of this is in the FEMA floodway area, which doesn't allow us to stockpile any dirt or materials at all. We can get in there and excavate and remove materials, but we can't stockpile any materials in there without violating FEMA requirements. So that's why our landscape berm and buffers stop at that perimeter edge. And again, at the end of the day, this is our reclamation plan, which is basically the large lake with the riverfront trail and the connection up to C and a half road per the active trails plan. So with that, I conclude my presentation, and if there's any questions I might answer, let me know.
Thank you, Mr. Austin. Do we have questions for the applicant?
I'll ask a couple. Thanks, Mr. Austin. I actually really appreciate that presentation. Sometimes we don't get that thorough presentation from applicants. It was helpful for me. One question I have, and just with the reclamation project and the financial warranty you have to put up, is that in the form of a bond, a deposit, but something that's secure for the community, we know it's going to happen?
Right, yeah. It's typically a reclamation bond through the state of Colorado, through the Division of Mining Resource.
And then, just because I've heard different numbers, the CUP is for, request is for ten years, is that correct?
The mining, the sand and gravel mining operations is for ten years. And then after that, we need another two years for final site reclamation.
All right. And then my last question, and this is mostly just curiosity, if I'm allowed to ask that, Mr. Teskey. Is it normal for an operation like this to create upon that big after the fact? It just seems like such a drastic difference in what the property was before and will be when it's finished.
You know, I would say that the other pits that we work with MA on, we would typically try to backfill and provide more residential density opportunities or commercial development. The problem that we have on this particular site is you can see the third, the southern third of the properties in the floodway, you can't build anything there. And the city and the regulators are currently in the process of updating the floodplain maps, and we're anticipating that that floodway's probably going to get wider down in this area. And so trying to get residential development in this floodplain and potentially a larger floodway area, long-term, is probably going to be a problem. And so we thought it was just easier to leave it as a lake amenity.
So once that lake is established, what, is it a private property or a private lake?
It will be initially, yes. But there could be opportunities down the road to do something different with that.
All right. Thank you. That's all my questions.
Go ahead.
Since we're talking about the size of the lake, it is, it covers a huge portion of that lot. Does it create any groundwater for the adjacent properties?
You know, the funny thing is, is the water's already there. It's just there's sand and gravel that's in those void spaces now. So it's not going to change that groundwater condition at all.
Okay. And just for clarification, I know that you're going to go over this with the state, but essentially, you're using water that you have rights to from the Colorado River into that project, so that's what's going to fill that lake?
Yeah, essentially, we're going to have to go through water rights and water core to make up for evaporative losses. My understanding, and I'm not a water expert by any means, but my understanding is, is there's, it's easier to make that happen on this section of the Colorado River as opposed to some of the other areas upstream.
Thank you. Do we have other questions for the applicant? Looks like it.
I have one to kind of piggyback on, Sandra's, and that's regarding the typically, you mentioned in your presentation that typically this is a twenty-year process for mining operations, and I think that's, I don't know the exact years, but it seems when I look at other gravel pits that they never get reclaimed. So that was one element that I was concerned about coming in to tonight. You've mentioned that you guys are volunteering to cut it in half down to ten years. And I was just wondering if you could share, even at that point, why ten years? Why not five? Why not seven? Why not three? What, how does the business work at a ten-year model but not work at a shorter model?
Do you know what's going to happen with the economy in the next ten years?
I do not.
And that's part of our challenge as well. If we continue growing like we're doing right now, like I said, if Los Colonius, if this gravel pit would have been here when Los Colonius and Dos Rios were happening, MA Concrete was the contractor on those projects, the majority of this material would be gone, and it's going to happen quickly. The problem is, is that economically, if we get into a downturn, we're not going to be doing as much construction work. We need that ability to get through this process, because as you see, we've already been in this process for almost four years. We still have another year minimum before we can even make this happen. And so we've got to have enough window in there that we can viably make this project work. And one of the other challenges that we actually run into is that you, we can process sand and gravel on this site to a certain point, but then it all ends up getting stockpiled on the site, and we can't get rid of it quick enough. And so then we process, we stockpile, we use up, deplete those resources, and then come back and mine more as we go through the project site. But because we're leaving this as a lake, we don't have the luxury of kind of backfilling and using the area where we mined out the sand and gravel and put overburden in that area to make use of that for stockpile areas. So as we move north through this site, we start to run out of room to stockpile materials. And so again, we just, it's going to take a little bit of time to be able to get these materials out of here. And our truck trips, we're trying to keep those truck trips low enough so that we don't impact the adjacent neighborhoods. Most of these sand and gravel operations will have at least twenty to fifty trucks per day as composed, as compared to what we're running.
Thanks.
First of all, I want to echo Commissioner Wackerly's praise of your thorough presentation. I think we all really got a lot out of that, so thank you for that. I have a couple of questions, not surprisingly, related to the bike and pedestrian aspect of this. The first one is really just more out of curiosity. It's not something that would affect my deliberations. And that has to do with generally, when there's a new development, the front of the property would be required, I think, required or they just typically do, make the bike and pet improvements just on that aspect of it, would bring it up to what was on the existing plan. And I'm sure you know that C and a half is designated as an active transport corridor, and because of its speed limit of thirty-five miles an hour, I think the recommended bike facility for that would be a bike lane, six feet or greater bike lane. So are you planning to do that on your property front, or for some reason, will that not be done?
That's not proposed with this application. The current code requires improvements if it's classified as a local street. C and a half road is classified as a collector's street, and improvements on collector's streets, with the exception of turn lanes required to get into or out of your project, are built by the applicant. But all of the other adjacent improvements are city's responsibility, because it's a collector's street and above, and those improvements are put together and typically done in more of a corridor-length project rather than small little pieces. But the current code does not require that.
Okay. Yeah, thank you. And again, that's, I was just more curious about that. But the one that's more significant to me, and you can help me out with this, is I'm just concerned about the possibility that your operations would start before the riverfront trail was completed. Now, we're getting reassurance that the riverfront connection is getting closer and closer, but we don't know for a fact exactly when that will happen. But even if we go by the 2025, hopeful on that, how does that time with the start of your operation when there'll be gravel trucks on C and a half road?
Again, we, to get through the state process, we have a minimum of one year to make that process happen, assuming we're successful. We still have a lot of hoops to jump through to get to that point. As far as when the city construction on that trail goes, I, again, I think Public Works Director might be better prepared to answer that, but I can't, all I can tell you is it's probably at least a year out before we have our permits in place. It's going to take, even once we get those permits in place, we've got to come in and build all of the perimeter buffering requirements. You know, if I were betting, it probably is going to happen pretty close to the same time.
Okay, that, I understand. Both of you are just giving your best estimates. I was just trying to get some kind of idea of how close it's going to be there. Thank you.
Do we have other questions for the applicant? All right, looks like we don't. Thank you, Mr. Austin. Appreciate your comments. At this time then, we'll open the public hearing for public comment. Please direct questions to the commission, not to the applicant or staff. If testimony is duplicative or repetitious of what has already been presented, please indicate in your comments agreement or disagreement with preceding testimony. Public comment is limited to three minutes per person. That time does go fast. Please note the Planning Commission may not directly respond to questions that you ask but that we have heard your questions and may choose after public comment to ask the applicant or staff to address specific questions. Do we have anyone who wants to provide public comment on this item this evening?
Mr. Chairman, I apologize, I have something I need to remedy with my eye real quick. I need to just excuse myself for just a moment.
All right. Well, why don't we just take a three-minute break then, and we'll let you address that, and we'll be right back at six forty. And we'll, we'll let you address that and we'll be right back at 6:40. Thanks, everyone. We'll go back on and we were just getting started with our public comment. It looks like we have someone standing at the podium for us, so we're ready when you are.
So I have put together a really short video slideshow just to kind of show you some of my concerns. This is the 23 road pit. About a 30-minute period. This is, this is the 20 road pit. There's a truck driving with lots of dust. They water it and then he drives over it again and the dust is just as bad. This is also the 20 road pit. This is the Magic Creek pit. It runs by United. They have their hollowed asphalt in it. It gets done in the dust. This is the White Water Sand and Gravel Pit out of Whitewater. And that truck's running down a road that's been watered enough that there was no dust. This is the 23 road pit. This is their idea of maintaining stuff. This is the berm out at the 20 road pit. It's apparently caught on fire. This is the, uh, White Water Sand Gravel Pit that's on D Road. That they've done a really nice job of putting up berms and maintaining them. And out at Whitewater, where there's no development, they still have this wonderful wall put up around their operation. This is what the 23 road pit looks like today. I don't know how many years it's been there. This is the kind of development we prefer not to have, including this one. And I know I'm a few seconds over. This is a private lake, would be preferable, something of this nature. This is the Corn Lake Public Access Lake with a reclaimed gravel pit. And this is near the Elum Project. It's just a mosquito haven full of trash. And just to give you a perspective of the timeframe that this is going to happen in and how it affects those of us who live there. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can you hear me?
Yes. We can, yes.
Sorry about that. I'm so short. I brought my own chair. I'm Jack Byram. I'm a user in a recumbent trike of this stretch of the active transit corridor on C and a half road. I'm also a longtime resident of this fair city. I just had a couple of questions. One is a technical question for the commission. Can you clarify the number of trucks estimate from Austin? He gave that as 10 trucks total a day. Does that mean 10 trucks going out, full of gravel? Or does that mean five coming in empty and 10 going out? I'm not a traffic engineer, so if possible, I would like clarification on that. Another clarification I think might be useful. It seems kind of vague to me that the COU requirement positive so far requires improvements to C and a half road. It's never spelled out what that means. Does that mean for the right of way of, of the applicant only? That's almost what it sounded like in the presentation we just had, the 150-some-odd thousand. I don't know if the city, the applicant, and the county are going to rebuild the whole road. Honestly, that's what needs to be done before the gravel is running down this road. If you can do that, I think a lot of people will feel a lot safer and happier about it. So can you spell that out in the permit so we're all on the same page legally? There's no surprises. And just, you know, my other thought was, and this may be controversial, but could you actually make a condition of the active extraction that the trail, the riverfront trail was actually operational? That's all. Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Thank you, sir.
Ladies and gentlemen, my name is Suzanne Daniels. I live and farm immediately east of this prop- proposed gravel pit and we will share a fence line. I am going to assume you have done all of your research to present this permit for consideration, and I hope this is not a poor assumption on my part. I get that it is not your problem, nor the gravel pit's problem, that there are homeless camps along the river on the south end of this property. I get that it is not your problem that folks speed on our 35 mile per hour posted road. I get that it is not your problem that children who live here wait in the dark on the side of C and a half road for their school buses to pick them up every morning in the wintertime. I get that it is not your problem, kids who live here are riding their bikes along C and a half road or chasing an errant soccer ball into C and a half road during the day while on summer break. What I also get is that this is your problem, that this mile and a half street, C and a half road, is not prepared for more commercial traffic, heavy truck traffic, dump trucks and belly dump trailers hauling gravel both directions, east and west down this road. This road with no shoulder, this road with no bike lane, this road with no turn lanes. What is your problem is that this road is already in disrepair with chunks of asphalt broken and missing from daily residential traffic, large cracks all across the road every few feet, potholes, high spots and low spots. You told us a few weeks ago, we were a medium-use, median-population area with medium concern from you. Are you willing to make C and a half road a higher priority? Are you willing to upgrade C and a half road to a higher-density, higher-use corridor? Does your traffic count in January 2021 really tell you what it's like now? Now that we have three very large apartment complexes and more traffic than ever from the new construction and recreational facilities along the parkway to our west? Look at your 2021 traffic study. It was done in January when the temperature high that day was 31 degrees. No, there weren't very many bikes out there that day. But when I went home at 5 o'clock today to let my chihuahua out to go potty before I came here, I saw way more than what his little presentation showed earlier. Are you willing to make C and a half road safer for everyone who uses it? Safer for the folks who walk out on the road to retrieve their mail every day? For children waiting for the school bus or walking next door to visit a friend? For the mass quantities of bicycles who ride up and down the road every day? For the dump truck driver who sits up so high he can't see the kiddos waiting for the school bus in the dark and has to live with the consequences after the accident? You say the riverfront trail is going to solve all these problems, but it won't. Even if the trail is connected to the south of all of our properties, it's not going to solve a lot of these problems. And we have to laugh when you say negotiations are going well. You're talking about our friends and neighbors. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thaddeus Wilcox here. Live on 2831 C and a half. Questions I have were kind of like what we just said. You know, what they said is, we believe most landowners or all landowners are okay with this or that there is an easement. And what I just wanted to know, do you really have those people? Are those people, you know, Skinner's really going to sell? The collector's street, from what MA was saying, if it's a collector's street, it sounded like he's saying that the city's responsible for bringing up the whole street, if you deem it a collector's street, to all the low, uh, recent improvements that a collector should have. What else was I, uh, well, you know, like I say, the, the peak traffic study, that didn't really coincide with what you see every day, you know? There's a lot more cars going to work, getting off work. Was it done before the apartments were built? Was it, you know, during, when they're having concerts during the middle of the week? Was the survey in the winter, which it sounded like it was? You know, 10-foot berms, from what I know of construction, trucks are 13-foot tall. Loaders are taller, you know? I don't see how 10-foot berms, I don't know what that really works. But really, my big thing here is safety, you know? I think progress is good, you know, if we, you know, things need to go on. But I'm concerned with the safety on the street. Going to the mailbox, the street's really narrow. I followed a few trucks, you know, on my way to work and stuff. Because of this meeting, I noticed a truck that was in front of me. It was a haul truck. I think there's a foot on each side of the truck from the yellow line to the white line. I don't know how anybody even gets by that, you know, when they're driving on the road or whatever. But I'm behind a bicyclist. The law states that I have to be three foot away from them when I pass them. There is nothing but marbles, maybe six inches of asphalt from the, the white line outside, and nothing but dirt for the bikers to ride on. And they won't, they won't ride on that. In order to pass somebody on a bike on that street, if someone's coming, you pretty much have to stop behind the bicycle, wait for the oncoming traffic to go. Then you have to proceed three foot around, hoping that one of your neighbors doesn't pull out of their lot. You know? In conclusion, you know, I, I kind of believe that the city, before you let this go, you need to make the improvements and make it safe for the public on that street before the gravel pit could be even started. You know, it's kind of like, kind of like the city kind of caused the problem with the colonias and apartments and all the traffic that's there now. And the road has not been taken care of for all these years. So like I say, it seems like we need to be done, the road first. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm Ken Heinecke. I live at 2835 C and a half road. I've got a couple concerns, I guess you can say. Y'all talk about it's going to be good for the wildlife. Well, how's them deer going to get through the river when there's events all the way around it? What about the mating bald eagles that's in my, on my property? That's just next to Glenn and Sharon. I mean, a lot of people that don't bother, but it bothers me. That's why I've lived there since 77. It's, it's just crazy. And then the, the road analysis that we heard today is about as far off as I've ever could have heard, imagined it. That road is terribly busy. There's more than a couple bicycles a day going down that thing. It's just, we got grandsons, grandkids, playing in the yard, shooting like somebody said, kick a ball out there. Somebody's going to get killed. I'm telling you right now, somebody's going to get killed. And I hope you guys do the right thing and put the bike pass in, build C and a half road the way it needs to be built before any other construction goes on. Thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening. My name is Hannah Costanzo. I live at 2852 C and a half road, directly across from the proposed gravel pit. I like to second every single comment made about the road. The traffic study is insulting, including the counts made apparently today. But what I'd like to speak about is the proposed hours of operation. While I appreciate that they are 6:00 AM to 6:00 PM, I believe is what he said they are supposed to be, but they're going to cut them back to 7:00 AM to 6:30. Excuse me, my throat is very dry. Is that just, they're saying they're doing it? Do we have anything that that is what it's going to be? Also, do we have anything that it will only be in frequent nighttime and weekend work? I do understand that there are emergencies and that occasionally there will be outside of those hour work. But what I'm looking for is some kind of agreement or guideline or set of rules that need to be followed? This is a residential area. There are children. There are retirees. We need to know what's going to happen to an acceptable level. Like, we can't I don't think that's one-hundred-and-twenty-five feet, so I would like that to be verified, if that's at all possible. He's a retiree, he will be there all day regardless of working hours, so. And I would be curious to know if the traffic study took into account if the apartment buildings were at full capacity, and if the campground is at full capacity, and also how the event center, the amphitheater affects it when it's at full capacity, how that affects our traffic. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Michelle Wilcox, and I live at twenty-eight, thirty-one C and a Half Road. And mine is more of an emotional speech for you guys. This is the first time I saw that film that Sharon showed about those other gravel pits. It breaks my heart to see that, to know that's coming into our neighborhood. My question is, how would you like it if that was your neighborhood? And you saw that that was coming into your, down your street, and you're going to see all those trucks, and you just see them going? You've heard this before, and I'm just going to repeat it again, the traffic is tremendous. Two thousand and one study, guys, sorry. Come stay with us for a week and see what the traffic is like. Come see in the summertime when school is out. Watch the people up and down the street with their kids, and the little kids on their bikes, and coming up and down, and the people walking. The traffic in the morning, you go out to your mailbox, you've got to be careful. I'm not, they're not going thirty-five miles an hour. Those cars are going sixty, seventy. Our neighbor next door, one of the cars was going so fast in the middle of the night, hit, came so fast, hit, flipped, hit his car in the driveway, and then the car ended up on the next neighbor's roof. Flipped onto the roof, that's how fast they were going down the streets. They were hoping to be here to explain what happened to them, but that's what the traffic is like on our street. Same thing, daylight. We're Colorado, we don't have a lot of daylight. Look at already what's happening. It's dark in the mornings, it's dark in the evenings. You see those kids out there, even when we get home late. But another thing, and I wish I would have printed you some copies, I took some pictures on my phone of our street. When the residents, any of us, have company come over, the neighbor had a funeral not too long ago, you have a graduation party, you just have guests. People are parked on the street because there's nowhere to park in your yards, so they park along the street, so that's more parking on the side of the street, where, again, there's no sidewalks, so they're parking on the side, and we're talking diagonal. Then I even have a picture of the Eddy Apartments, where they're parked out on the streets also, because there's not enough parking there also, because of everything that's happening down there. I wish you guys could see what we see living there on a daily basis. And now to add this extra piece on there, again, I just want you to hear from an emotional piece, and I know they'll have the rest of the pieces, but how would you like this if this was your neighborhood and what you just saw today? Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is, let's be sorry. My name is Glenn Bichard. I live at what you refer to as the Bradshaw Residence, that twenty-eight, forty-five C and one-half road. And I have some things here. My, my presentation's not nearly as professional as Mr. Austin's, because a lot of the things that I based it on have changed, which has been the course of progress for this thing over the last four years that I've been dealing with it. One of the things that did change a little bit was, you know, who's going to maintain the haul routes as, from M.A. as they come in and out of this? They had spoke originally of twenty-five, eighty-five thousand pound trucks possibly per day, never determining whether it was an average or a cap, a maximum. It was just twenty-five thousand. So on the basis of that, I did the math, and on this, Mr. Austin and I can agree. And that is that if you were to have just those twenty-five trucks, you would have one-hundred-and-twenty-four billion, eight-hundred thousand pounds of gravel coming out of that pit. In order to accommodate that, you'd have to dig a hole one-hundred-and-fifty-seven feet deep. Obviously, that's not going to happen, certainly not with only ten trucks. But then the ten trucks is, is it ten trucks, big trucks, ten little trucks, or is it even ten trucks of each kind every day? We don't know. Okay? So my numbers are going to be a little bit off on that. Sorry about that. But the road still has to be maintained. And if we're being forced to maintain a road for the purposes of a commercial enterprise, that commercial enterprise, in order to show their community-forwardness, should be paying for that. Ten-year conditional use permit is unacceptable. Now, this also, Mr. Austin and I agree. And that is that five years would easily accommodate the total removal of every scrap of gravel from that pit, as evidenced by his client, who said that the Los, Los Colonius and Dos Rios would have emptied that pit in five years or less. Okay? So what you're saying is, is that the expected usage of it is less than what was necessary to build those two projects. And then to come in and say, "Well, we're just going to go ahead and build one-hundred-and-twenty-two to three hundred units of multi-use family housing, small family housing. You just built the Eddy, you're going to build five more next to where Doug Jones' place used to be, and now you need another three hundred down there." If you want to talk about changing the character and incompatibility with the local neighborhood, right there, you hit it on the head. Okay? I know that the department, or the Colorado Parks and Wildlife probably doesn't have this right at the moment, but I'm sure, from having lived near gravel pits on the Front Range area, when you do a gravel pit, you end up quite often with acidification of the water that's in there. As far as being good for the wildlife, maybe it is, maybe it's not. You go to many big gravel pits on the Front Range, and they're devoid of fish, devoid of wildlife, and the birds that come there end up with problems. So, until they can prove that. And one thing for staff, you mentioned in your presentation, first thirty feet excavation and then one-hundred-and-twenty-five feet, and I would like to know what those two numbers refer to. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commission, for letting me address. I'm Charles D. Gunther from three-seventy-four Times Street, Grand Junction. My house is about fifteen, thirteen-hundred feet from the entrance of the proposed site. I do not live on C and a Half Road. I'm a flatland cyclist myself. I use the Riverfront Trails quite a bit. Anybody that does that, all that water, all them bodies of water along them trails were gravel pits at one time. Travel I-70 Altafruta, the lake that you see is quite used, they were gravel pits at one time. My experience of C and a Half Road is my exit out of my, out of my area to get east or west. The use during the week is not that much by cyclists. It's, it's mostly on the weekends. It's great to hear the progress of the Riverfront Trail. I had no idea it was going that, that, that far at this time. I do realize that the CPW and Recreation Alters own most of the property through there, so I can see now why that has come along so far. Austin Civil Group and its efforts for two and a half years have done excellent job in answering all the requirements and not the provisions by the, by the codes put out by our city for the requirements for this project. It's much needed in a growing community. The company I work for purchases thousands of tons of gravel a year, and so we are running out of this commodity in this area. You've heard a lot of comments in opposition tonight. A lot of times, no comment would sometimes constitute an approval in my past involvement in this type of activity. I would urge the Commission tonight to approve the condition use permit as presented and for the short-term impacts and long-term benefits to our community. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Good afternoon, ladies, or evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Greg Mueller. I own the property, I'm one of the owners of property located at twenty-eight, sixty-nine C and a Half Road, which is immediately east, and we share a common property line. I'm also going to take a contrarian position from what you've already heard. This is a classic NIMBY situation, not in my backyard. I see this proposal at, from a completely different position than some of the other neighbors. I don't live there. Our property is undeveloped agricultural land. We just have a vineyard there and some fruit trees. But what I see for the long term is employment for our members of our community. I see tax revenue coming out of that. I see city improvement. What we have to do is look at the long term of what this project is going to be offering, not only now but in the future, for not only myself, but also for my neighbors. We're looking at a three-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar benefit for road and bikeway improvement. We're taking a piece of property that has previously halted the, the bike path, and we're bringing that back in, so we can do a connector route there. We're looking at land that, that's been donated, as I said, and also, what it ultimately does, it takes this land out of residential development in the future, and it's going to maintain the rural and agricultural character of what the property is right now. The only concern that I have is that the lake that will be left is going to ultimately be an attractive nuisance, and it could be a liability. It's the only thing, that's the only concern that I have, but I'm sure that they're going to be looking at this one, they're going to be putting up fences and things like that around the lake. The only other thing that I would hope is if there's going to be an access onto C and a Half Road, that there is, should be a parking lot there or a parking area that is part of that improvement, so when people want to come and go off of the, the bike trail, that they have a place to park their car, so they can unload their bike and then get onto the trail. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
My name is Sean Malone. I live basically right across the street from this thing. Maybe someday they'll fix C and a Half Road. Nobody, hasn't happened yet, but if you can resurface it, okay. One thing you can't do is make the road wider. Bicycles, dump trucks, duh. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name's Keith Hensel. I guess I'm a proponent of the gravel pit. I've been in, in the construction and crushing industry for thirty years. A lot of people don't understand, we're running out of a very important gravel resource. A lot of the pits around, in the county are getting depleted very quickly. It won't be too many years, and we'll be hauling all of our gravel from Cisco and the Delta areas. It's not that far off. One of the things I see it helping, the cost of this project for the city and county, if there's local gravel available, you don't have to transport it for thirty miles away, it's a lot cheaper to get things done, which relates to lower taxes for all of us. If we want to get rid of all the gravel pits and import all our material from fifty, sixty miles away, instead of it costing a million dollars to do a mile road, it's going to cost five million dollars to do a mile road. The city and county should be thinking of that. The ponds are great for wildlife. Again, I've been around gravel pits my whole life. The trail that they're putting in and that Martin's, or M.A. is willing to do the construction work and put the trail through their property is huge. That section needs to be completed. I don't live in the immediate area, I do live in Orchard Mesa, and I do actually join another gravel pit, so I know what it's like to live next to a pit. Nobody likes the dust and whatever, but I urge you to pass this, it's an important asset for the community. That's it.
Thank you. Do we have anyone else interested in providing public comment on this item this evening? I suppose I'll check online as well while we're waiting.
We have one comment. It's from Ken Ellenberger. He says, "Hi, I live at twenty-eight, seventy-three C and a Half Road. I'm logged on watching, and since the beginning of this meeting, I've counted at least twenty-five to thirty bikes go past the house down C and a Half Road. The traffic survey needs to be done again." And that is our only comment online.
All right. Thank you. Well, do we have anyone else interested in providing public comment on this item this evening?
My name is Terri Heideke. I live at twenty-eight, thirty-three C and a Half. I'm a lifetime resident of C and a Half Road. There's a lot of retired people, a lot of people that have made their life there. But my biggest problem is, is they can tell us all this stuff, but what's going to keep us safe? Like you said, we can't make right-ofways on the road. We're a rural area. We have mailboxes. There's no place on either side. We have irrigation ditches. Are, are you guys going to redevelop all of that to keep us safe? I don't care how many people ride the road. I don't care how many people walk the road. It's just going to take one time for one of our kids, or like, my dad used to ride that road every day on his three-wheeler bike, and everybody knew him. Who's going to see somebody like that and keep them safe? Who is responsible to keep us safe? And then plus, the people walk their dogs, they get off the leash, they're in the road. My grandson gets on the bus in the morning. I have to keep him back, because we have another trucking company right across the street, and they have to take wide turns to even get into their driveway. What happens with that? We got them trucks? Are they going to be able to do just left-hand turns too? Or are they allowed to do them all? What's going to be the conditions? We have no conditions. Everybody, like they said, you need to come live our life for a little while and see the condition. It's just like people coming by with trash in their truck, they hit a bump. We're always picking it up and putting it on our trash to get hauled off. Thank you for your time.
Do we have anyone else interested in providing public comment on this item this evening? I suppose I'll check online as well while we're waiting.
We have one comment. It's from Ken Ellenberger. He says, "Hi, I live at twenty-eight, seventy-three C and a Half Road. I'm logged on watching, and since the beginning of this meeting, I've counted at least twenty-five to thirty bikes go past the house down C and a Half Road. The traffic survey needs to be done again." And that is our only comment online.
All right. Thank you. Well, do we have anyone else interested in providing public comment on this item? Looks like we don't. So at this time, we will close the public comment portion of the hearing. Would our applicant like to provide any response or rebuttal to what we've heard from the
Again, good, good evening, Commissioners. My name is Mark Austin with Austin Civil Group. I, I was trying to write down comments as, as people came up here, and so I'm just going to kind of run down through that list and, and see if I can at least touch on, on some of the issues that, that, at least that I noted in this. The, the first one had to do with the landscape berms and dust in the pit areas. Again, that's what's a little bit different with the current code that we have in place right now with the city of Grand Junction. Our landscaping requirements are much more stringent. We're proposing to landscape that berm with trees and shrubs. You saw the landscape plan presented by city staff. It has to be irrigated, it has to include all of that landscape plant material, not only for stabilization of the dirt, but it's a requirement of the city landscaping requirements. The dust, again, this is a wet pit. The pictures that I think you saw were from the twenty-three-road pit, which is a dry pit. This pit is in water. Most of the material we have to pull out of this has got to set and dry out before we can transport or do anything else with it. And so that moisture just on that site is going to create a different condition than what you saw at the twenty-three-road pit. There is some confusion on the, the number of trips. So again, with the traffic studies that are required, you typically look at what's termed the peak hour. You look at the peak hour in the morning, and you look at the peak hour in the evening. And you take that as a maximum trips during that peak hour. And so the, the traffic study that, that we prepared- And so the, the traffic study that, that we prepared, or that, excuse me, that our consultant prepared, identified those peak hours, uh, for the project and those traffic volumes. And that was the 77 trips, uh, for cars. That was the maximum number of trips. We were actually out there doing, again, additional pedestrian and bike counts, uh, this last week. And as part of that count, we also just did a check to make sure those numbers were still consistent from the, the 2021 study. And the numbers did increase. Uh, they, they increased not more than 10%. So instead of 77 peak hour trips, let's just round, instead of eight, let's just say it's 10. So now we have 87 peak hour trips on that road. The volume on that road compared to, uh, its actual capacity is, instead of 7%, is 8%. The point is, is it's still a fairly low traffic, uh, number on that roadway system. Again, several comments on C and a half road. I, I just, I, again, I think everybody's in agreement that C and a half road is, is not in good condition. We're doing our part, uh, with the city and the county to make that system better. Wildlife concerns, a, a, again, uh, we have a requirement that, that sand and gravel pit is secured. It, it's, it's got to be secured for, to keep people out of there. Uh, once that pit is reclaimed, uh, typically the division of Parks and Wildlife will provide direction on what type of fence is wildlife friendly. Uh, that's a pretty typical requirement that we will get as part of the reclamation plan, so that if we do have fence on the property, uh, it has to be wildlife friendly fence. Uh, again, there were confusion on the peak hour trips. Again, that's 10 trips, and you've got to have, it, it's 10 trips per day, so that, those, those 10 trips are going into the gravel pit, and they're coming back out. So that is, on average, the 10 trips per day. The traffic study, uh, it, by the way, also not only looks at current traffic volumes, but it looks at volumes 20 years out. And as part of that, they look at the, the growth factors in the community and in the surrounding area, and that is a standard requirement in the traffic study. So not only do you look at existing conditions, but you look at conditions 20 years down the road to make sure that, uh, there's not any long-term impacts. And again, the traffic analysis indicated that, uh, there's level of service A on this road system, not only now, but, uh, 20 years down the road. There was a comment about, um, an ADU and the 125-foot offset. And I'm going to try to zoom in here a little closer to let everybody see this. Um, so, so this is an air photo that we had. I believe this is a 2021 or 22 photo, and, uh, from the city GIS. And you'll notice over here, uh, I don't know, hopefully you can see it on your screen, but there's kind of a gray square here. This is, I believe, the additional ADU that was referenced by, uh, one of the commenters. And we actually went back out and measured that location, uh, on the plan. You'll see it's not in the air photo, uh, but it is out there. And the 250-foot crusher setback, again, that is the distance from that ADU that's on that property. And here's our 250-foot crusher setback requirement. Uh, the excavation setback, you can see, uh, is identified right here. So, a-again, um, hopefully that addresses the, the question about the ADU. One of the commenters was, was talking about that, that things have changed. Again, this has been a long process. We started this in 2019. The zoning changed. Um, initially, like I said, we had proposed some residential units along the lake as part of the reclamation. Once the new comp plan came out, um, that wasn't really an option anymore. So the zoning cha, definitely did change on the project, which also impacted our reclamation plan. The number of trips, however, has never changed. The 2021 traffic study that was completed has the five trips of medium trucks and the five trips, uh, of the large trucks. That's been consistent from day one. Uh, the hours of operation, I think we've been consistent, uh, with those hours of operation as well. So I don't think there's ever been any changes on that. There was concern about, uh, maybe the, the pond not being able to support aquatic wildlife. Um, again, I would just encourage you to look along this corridor. There is numerous sand and gravel pits that have been reclaimed and are ponds on this property. There's one probably less than a quarter of a mile to the east of this site. There's vegetation and wildlife all around those areas. So I, I don't think the chances of, uh, are, there's not anything that's going to change this site from being something similar, uh, to the pond currently on the Division of Wildlife property. Oh, the, the last comment, uh, the, the person indicated that, you know, while this meeting's been going on, they've watched 25 to 30 bicycles pass their house. I, I don't dispute that at all. The difference is, is that our sand and gravel closed right about the time this meeting started. So those sand and gravel trucks are not on the road. Again, that's why we look at peak hours, um, in the traffic study. But, um, it's very well that there could be a lot more bicycle users on that road system, uh, but that's not when the sand and gravel operation is, is running. Uh, with that, I, uh, if the commissioners have any other questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Thank you, Mr. Austin. Do we have questions for the applicant? Looks like we do.
Yeah, I have one, Mr. Austin. Thank you. Uh, as, as community planner, there's a lot of expertise, or, or certainly a lot of knowledge uh, up here, but one thing I assure everyone that this dius doesn't separate and give anything more of on this side of it is any sort of superpowers as to know who's right, who's wrong, or, or to make any sort of judgment along those lines. So can you help me not have to do that when I consider the difference of, uh, of comments in regards to capacities of the road, um, engineering standards, what's safe, what's not safe? Does the, do, do the consultants in the studies that you've had to, uh, provide as part of the requirements for the, this application, are they required to be licensed?
Yes, they are. They're not only licensed as professional engineers typically, but there's also additional traffic training and certifications that, uh, they all go through as well.
And for something like the, the reports that had to be presented like this, does the jurisdictional authorities, whether it be the state, the county, the city, or otherwise, do they provide methodology that those licensed engineers must also follow in order to determine the results of those studies?
Yes, they do. That, at the, typically at the start of the project, the traffic engineer and the city traffic engineers and development engineers will sit down and define the methodology that they need to use, what intersections need to be evaluated, and any other pertinent information about what the city's going to require as part of that, that analysis. And then that report is repaired and provided as part of the submittal for the CUP application. Um, at that point, it's typically reviewed by the city development engineer, uh, and the city tran, uh, traffic engineer as well.
So you submit those for review, and, and they either provide comment that either methodologies or concepts were, were appropriately applied, or given the opportunity to indicate that they missed something or, or get challenged, right?
Correct.
Okay. That's all I have.
Do we have other questions for the applicant? Looks like we don't.
Thank you.
Mr. Austin. This time then, we'll close the public hearing. Turn to the planning commission for additional discussion, deliberation, and/or for a motion.
Is there an opportunity to ask staff some additional questions?
Yes, we certainly can. Now would be a good time to do that.
I had the same question. Me first?
Meaning you wanted to ask a question, or you had a question about asking questions?
Both.
Got it. All right.
I wanted to ask, we could ask staff. And then I have a question for Mr. Proll, if I could. For me, the road and the traffic on the road is the biggest issue, and I heard that that was probably the biggest concern from the neighbors also. And one, I have two questions. The first one is, um, how are roads and development of roads and improvements to roads prioritized through the city? And my more specific question of that is, when you do ask developers, which, whether you agree with it or not, to contribute and give the city a chunk of change, a big cash payment, in order to contribute towards a road improvement, does that definitely go to that road improvement? And does that put that road at any higher level of, um, prioritization on your list of what's going to be coming down the road?
Commissioner Reckley, um, Chair Tatski, I'm Trump Proll, Public Works Director, um, here. In regards to how we prioritize, um, the projects, um, so if you think back, um, or think about our transportation network, uh, as we have it right now, um, we have many, many roads throughout, areas that have developed throughout the city that look very similar to C and a half. I mean, the, the, the road surface is definitely better on many of those other roads, and I'll get to that in a minute. But as far as prioritization of what we're going to upgrade or not, usually it has to do with the adjacent development that's happening. So like 24 Road, um, the widening that we're doing out there right now. The, um, um, other roads that, that we've approved over the last, you know, 20 years, such as like 25 Road, 25 and a half Road, um, West Independent, you know, those were all roads similar to this at one point. And then as development happened, as demand happened, um, we, we expanded, um, expanded those to be the full collector sections, you know, that you see today. Uh, we still have many roads, if you think about 26 Road, or 26 and a half Road, 26 Road, 27 Road, North of Horizon Drive, North of Patterson Road. Those are all, um, yet to be, um, upgraded to a full collector standard. 2019, we did, um, pass a bond issue that is helping to pay for many of those upgrades of, of, um, some of, um, some key roads throughout the community. How those were prioritized, one, we're developing burgeoning areas, you know, such as 26 and a half Road, major backbone going up to Emerald Ridge, um, Summer Hill Way, or Summer Hill, um, existing subdivisions such as Grand Vista and so forth. And so that one was prioritized as a major north-south one. 26 Road, 27 Road, still yet to be, um, programmed, um, here in the next, in the next five years. So, um, that's how that one was prioritized, because it was a, it's a major north-south feeder, um, coming in from, um, from the north, from Paradise Hills and so forth. Other projects associated with that bond issue had to do with Safe Routes to School. Um, we're doing F and a half Road from 30 Road over to Thunder Mountain Elementary. We're doing, um, D and a half Road from 29 and a quarter over to 30 Road, which gets you, the, the infrastructure needed to get kids over to Pear Park Elementary. On the south, um, on Orchard Mesa, we're doing B and a half Road from, um, from 29 Road out to about 29 and three-quarter Road, where we've had a lot of development there, trying to get, you know, some concrete bike lanes and so forth to get folks back to the 29 Road corridor, which does have bike lanes on it and, and sidewalks, as well as back over to, to Lincoln OM Elementary. So, um, anyway, so that's how that has been prioritized on the, in the past. Um, in this case, on, um, and then increasing traffic volumes, um, are on there as well. On this particular road, on C and a half Road, um, yes, it is in a, um, significant level of distress. And we knew that, um, as we evaluated that, and it's ha, it's half county, half city, uh, we knew that, um, in order to handle the truck traffic, you know, that would be proposed, um, coming out of the, coming out of the mining operation here, that we needed to, to upgrade that condition. So city and the county are splitting evenly. The, um, kind of the milling and, and some of the, the, the deeper repairs that are needed, um, of level courses, what we're, we're, we have contemplated there. So the city and, and county will split that evenly. And then the overlay, the additional structure that's needed to be able to handle that additional load and smoothing of the entire road, um, that two-inch, two-inch overlay, um, is proposed to be split, um, three ways, um, with the, with the developer, Mesa County and the city paying for that additional structure over the top of that, because it's needed today, you know, and, and, and yet that additional load, we're, um, um, we needed, anyway, without it was, um, a fair request for the developer to help participate in that. As far as the widening of C and a half Road, um, yes, we're, we're banking on the Riverfront Trail will, will be a key, um, element in being able to convey a lot of the bikers that, that again, were referenced, um, by the, the one comment that we received online, and, um, um, as well as many other, um, people working the way up and down the Riverfront Trail, um, whereas right now, they're out there on 27 and a half and 29 Road. Um, as far as widening, yes, it, we got 22 feet of asphalt to work with. Uh, it's not really fair for us or by code to put that all on, on the developer. The, the widening of C and a half Road would be up to the city and the county to do at some point in the future. Most likely, the city, as it urbanizes, as there's more, um, demand on there, um, for those multimodal movements, um, and, and concrete walks and so forth, that would happen over time. And will be done by the city, not by the developer. As far as a little perspective on, um, on what we're looking at, as far as increased traffic, you know, out there. So right now, we've got about 650 cars per day, and you average that, that, that is about 16, say that all those happen over 16 hours. Now granted, that's a 24-hour clock, but say it all jams, jams into 16 hours, you know, instead. So that's about, um, one and a half cars every minute, sorry, one and a half, um, one and a half minutes per car. In the future, in 2031, so when the, or when the analysis was, um, when the traffic analysis was, um, looking out to 2031, that gets down to, with the proposed growth in the area, that got down to about 1.1 minutes per vehicle. With the 15 vehicles per day that, that's proposed here on the, um, with the gravel pit operations, that averages about one vehicle for every 36 minutes, averaged over, um, a nine-hour day, not the 16 hours that everyone else is. So my, my point to all that, that there's, um, in the, in the time that it would take a bike to do a, about a mile and a half at about 10 miles per hour, that's like beach cruiser speed. You're not, you're not on the e-bikes, you're not, you're not the road, the hard road bike, um, hard road biker that's, that's, you know, 15 to 18 miles per hour. It'll take you about nine minutes to get across that mile and a half. And so in that, in that nine minutes, you may or may not even, um, have a truck there. And my other point is, as far as the other vehicles coming by, um, we rode this last week just to see what, you know, kind of traffic, you know, does come as you're, as you, um, come across this, this section. And yeah, you have three to four vehicles, you know, that have passed you, um, a couple times on a Saturday morning. Um, yeah, you had one vehicle that passed us in the mile and a half as we, as we went in one direction or the other. So anyway, yes, the trucks, um, yeah, there's, there's some safety concern, you know, there, but, um, with the density of the, the traffic out there, or lack there, lack thereof, you know, a truck and a vehicle come in the opposite direction and a bike, yes, you do need to share the road, just like you do now. You have to share the road, um, out there when you only have 22 feet of asphalt. Many of those bikers move over to the Riverfront Trail by the time, um, early 2025, mid 2025, which is about the time when, um, I think this, um, operation is slated to get up and running, um, or shortly thereafter. So, um, anyway, but as far as prioritization of C and a half Road, we'll need to see a fair amount more development, um, out there to help, um, justify those additional improvements.
So is that 650 cars a day, do you feel like that's a current, um, number?
So where that, where that came from is, is, is essentially from the developer's traffic study, and so they use peak hour. Um, the, the highest peak hour, I think, was an AM peak of like 65 cars in the peak hour. And so from a transportation standpoint, you, you multiply that, multiply that by 10 to get to the, the average daily traffic, um, um, which is something a little more easy for folks to digest. But even if you were to double that, say that that was, that was wrong, there was COVID going on, and that was wrong, you're still doubling, um, you, you still get up to about 1,100, 1,200 cars per day, and, um, and you're still averaging one car every 30 minutes along that, along that section. So, sorry, 30 seconds, um, along that section. So... So still, the density of vehicles on that particular section of road is still within the capacity of the road.
Thank you. That was actually my exact question. If this traffic study somehow is off and isn't accurate, and isn't according to what today's traffic is, what would you feel comfortable with approving this project based on? But like you said, double, so even if it's double of what their traffic study is, that's still within what the road?
Still within the capacity of the road that's out there. And again, the surface of the road is going to look different than what it does today. I mean, it's rough. But with the improvements that the Mesa County and the city and the developer are working on bringing to fruition, that'll be changing.
So that's just my last question, sorry, and then I'll yield. But so when a developer does give you this money and writes a check, then at that point you will go ahead and do this project? So it's not like in five years, we're going to get it done? Or, because I mean, we're talking about improving the road, but it's going to happen.
Correct. So I would propose that happen before very many trucks hit the road, just because I need that extra structural thickness on the road to be able to handle that truck traffic. Otherwise, they'll be, it'll be much more detrimental to the existing asphalt that's left there right now, and there'll be much more damage in a very short period of time. So yeah, the idea is that this would be coming on, or that we'd be doing the road improvements that would coincide with the timing of the rest of the development.
All right, thank you.
Go ahead.
Yeah, thanks, Trent. That was all super helpful. Just a couple of quick follow-ups on that. I wasn't clear from you, is it possible to widen C and a half to fulfill the designations on the bike plan? Because the bike plan shows it, you know, because of its speed limit of 35 miles an hour, and even in the traffic report, they said you should probably consider it 40. So that requires at the very minimum a six-foot wide lane on both sides. It doesn't, I just am having trouble with the arithmetic there. It doesn't seem like it's possible unless you would considerably widen the road, but I think what we're hearing from the neighbors is that's not even possible. So what are your thoughts on that?
Yeah, Commissioner Scissors, the, yeah, it's definitely relatively tight out there with some of the mailboxes, you know, encroaching into that area. Generally, what I like to do when we overlay, we like to push the footprint of the road out, even by four feet, five feet, and we call that our first generation of multimodal improvements. And with the right-of-way that exists today and the encroachments that we have on both sides, that would be a challenge to do here, especially more so from the right-of-way perspective. I don't mind moving a fence back in order to accommodate that, mailboxes back in order to accommodate that. But we would have to go out and purchase a fair amount of the right-of-way from a number of parcels that actually have legal descriptions that go out to the center line of the road. And so it would be a much larger project to be able to make that happen here at this point, and definitely wouldn't be the responsibility of the developer. Again, that would be covered underneath our transportation impact fees and prioritized against many other projects here in the valley.
So another question, so after these current road improvements are done, it sounds like the funding is in place, and you guys are going to get right on it before we see gravel trucks on it. What happens down the road, sorry for the bad pun, when there's repairs needed, maintenance needed? How would that be financed?
Commissioner Scissors, so depending on whose jurisdiction it is down the road, depending on whose jurisdiction it is, we would partner with, just like we are this time, you know, it's half-city, half-county, and we're partnering with county, you know, on making those improvements. So that would happen at some point in the future. Odds are, we'd probably chip-seal it within the next three years, just to give a little additional structure there and seal up that asphalt, just like we've been doing on many of our overlays. So that would be coming here in about three years. And then, yeah, as potholes develop, it depends on whose jurisdictions it is in and so forth. But we're hoping with that additional structure, that we have a facility that's in a state of good repair, is what we talk about in the industry for years to come with that.
So the assurance, at least some assurance, is that it sounds like it would be, once you've made those improvements, it would go on a maintenance schedule every, you know, three years, whatever, you chip-seal and you monitor it for need for other repairs. So it's on your radar, and it would be treated like any other road at that point?
Correct. And generally, just for reference, we generally try to chip-seal about once every 12 years, and then, or within three years of an overlay. And then overlays generally happen in between 18 to 20 years, as far as that cycle time. One other element is the, as I know the developer, I cut that in the presentation, that the developer of the gravel pit operation is actually responsible for keeping the streets swept, should anything come out in the back of the trucks as they're leaving the site and so forth. So they will have some sweeping obligations there, but we also sweep about once every quarter as well for those roads that are in the city.
Thanks. I apologize to everybody for hugging Trent. It seems like a lot of the concerns are in your area. I'll ask one more, and then I'll yield. Regarding the traffic studies, now I tried to read that traffic study, and I'm not technical enough to really completely follow it, but I got the idea, but it seems like it really focuses on the road's ability to withstand, to handle traffic in volume and load and things like that. I didn't see a lot about, you know, some of the concerns that were raised by the neighbors about, you know, safety features on the road. So did I miss that, or is safety considerations part of a traffic study, or is that looked at in some other way?
So, yeah, the traffic study was most, was looking at, looking at the volumes that are proposed from the development, looking at the existing traffic that's there, and projecting out for what the future traffic will look like, and then how that traffic interacts. And so a lot of why that study is completed is to determine whether or not, say, a deceleration lane is needed, you know, to safely get the trucks out of the mainline traffic to be able to make that right turn, you know, into, into or out of, you know, I guess it goes either way, east or westbound, whether turn lanes are warranted. So there's a lot of that study there, but based, again, on the existing volumes and even the future volumes, and the low amount of truck traffic that's being generated by this particular facility, those additional, I mean, those safety features there with turn lanes weren't warranted from an engineering standpoint here. As far as, you know, the bike safety and the pedestrian safety and so forth, you know, that was not in there from my read of it, but typically isn't required here. In our new TDS updates, there are some elements in there to consider that from a capacity standpoint for bikes and peds. Anyway.
Okay, thanks. I'll yield. Sorry about that.
Just a question.
Go ahead.
Appreciate, you just mentioned TDS, and that's a question I was going to ask, and I appreciate you hitting that, because, you know, this project could be a year in the making, and the city is working on a new TDS manual, so I appreciate you stating that just a second ago. My comment question is not nearly as heavy as health and safety, but I want to address the video that was provided in the presentation. In the applicant's presentation, they did a really good job painting the picture of an extremely nice facility, grass, sprinklers, so on and so forth, and I realize city code has changed, but some of the pictures or clips that we saw in the video, I was pretty unimpressed with the condition of some of those clips. What assurances can the city make, the neighbors, and just the general public, that facility won't turn into what we just saw on that video? And that, I don't want to, the question wasn't asked to the applicant, because it's not really fair to them, because maybe some of those facilities aren't theirs. I may be addressing the city staff in regards to what has changed, so those neighbors don't have to look at that.
So you're getting out of Public Works Wheelhouse here?
I'm not looking at you, I'm looking at Kristen. I'm just kidding.
That's great. And so I'm going to let Kristen address that.
All right.
Except Trent's taller than me. It's hard to say. I don't know where all those are. Some of them may not have been developed in the city. There are not that many gravel pits in the city limits, actually, so I don't know where those are. So I don't know what the county standards were, but I feel like our, between the code that we have, and as Mark was saying, Mark Austin, the ability that we have, if they do not perform as expected, but to what we approve, the conditions of approval you place on it, and definitely the state permit, we have the ability to shut it down. And so if those berms don't appear as, you know, we think they are going to, according to their landscape plan, things die, things get dustier, whatever, we do have mechanisms that we can come back to the developer and request that things are still operating according to what's approved.
Does an applicant provide a bond to make sure, so they've utilized all the assets of that land and to make sure that gets done right, everything's good? Do they bond to make sure it's completed and up to your standard?
Yeah, I believe they bond through the state as part of the state permit, not necessarily through the city.
Just those questions, because I just want to try to have some reassurances that, you know, that they're not going to be looking at a pile of bricks once you're done, the applicant's done. So, thank you.
Do we have other questions for staff?
My questions for Trent were answered in the form of the priority on C and a half Road, because that's certainly a factor here, that it seems to be one of the primary factors here. I can't ignore the fact that that's not the project that we're here to discuss. Is it impacted by this? Yes. So thanks for answering that, Trent. And so my question might be for you, Ms. Ashbeck, and that's in regards to, when we talk about, and I'm linking back into the C and a half Road conversation here, and that's for widening purposes, as I've studied this thing, you know, between, what is it, 28 and a half Road and 29 Road, there's only 1,800 feet out of the more than 5,600 linear feet there that have less than a 60-foot right-of-way. And it's only six properties that are that choked down, that take it down to just a 45-foot right-of-way. My question for you, Ms. Ashbeck, is when does right-of-way get dedicated? Is it when county becomes city, gets annexed into the city? Or is it at some use proposal?
It's typically the latter, the use proposal and the need, the city sees the need to acquire additional right-of-way to ultimately develop the street to its classification. So it is requested at the time that a development occurs. So at this one, there was no additional requirement. There is, I believe, there's the existing width of C and a half in front of this property. They're not dedicating any further right-of-way. They're dedicating a multipurpose easement for running dry utilities through, but there's no need for additional right-of-way. But this would be the point where the city would require a deed for right-of-way if it was needed.
Yeah, that's what my studies have shown as well, is that much of the right-of-way dedications for a good portion of this, of those six that create that chokehold down to 45, two of those are the two properties directly across that still extend out, you know, technically to the center of the road or close by. So, you know, I see a lot of opportunity here for the problems that have been brought up to be resolved equitably, and those lie in the intentions of fulfilling the goals of the Riverside Trail, which, nope, no assurances. Great progress and looking likely. Others would be, as these properties in the area annex into the city, there'll be the opportunity to enjoy city services and city standards as well. Right now, they remain in the county. And then as we have these sorts of agreements with equitable contributions to make these improvements, these seem like good steps forward here, in light of what the master plan is. And certainly, those comments are wholly and solely based on me wearing the City of Grand Junction community hat, and that may feel as though it doesn't give enough weight to the, just those along C and a half Road hat. And I understand that, that's the balance that we're charged with, trying to employ all of the plans and policies that we have and make it work. That's my last question.
I did have a question about the report. There's, near the end of it, a list of the conditions that are suggested for this permit. There were some questions asked by the commenters about what guarantees we have that these requirements will be met, and I take it from the report that we'll have those guarantees because they will be conditions of the approval. Are there other things? I see six of those listed here. Are there, is that, am I looking in the right place, or are there other conditions?
It is those, yeah. They're listed a little bit different on my, can't see my slide, but listed in more summary on the slide, but yes, in detail in the staff report, those six. But certainly, your prerogative planning commission to revise those, or add to, or delete.
Understood, thank you.
Are those at the end of the report?
They are, they're on packet, page 21 and 22.
Okay, yeah, recommendations.
Yeah, they're numbered one through six.
Chairman, I have just kind of some further comment. There may not be as much a question here, but for our discussion. I think there certainly has been a lot of issues brought up, not only in this hearing, but throughout this whole process. And it's very clear, and I haven't seen anybody challenging how C and a half Road has room for improvement. For this proposal and any individual property owner and proposals that comply with the codes, to me, it comes down to having the appropriate conversations at the appropriate part of the process, and equitability is a huge element of that as well, from the community planning standpoint. And in this case, I just don't think that the C and a half Road elements, or the completion of a bike trail elements, you know, extending way beyond this site, to require any individual property owner to inequitably address issues that already exist or are beyond the mitigation of the impacts they bring forth, I think that goes far beyond our intentions, our scope, and what is right as we develop throughout our community. And so I think when I look at the criteria here for looking at what's been proposed, and trying to understand how are we mitigating the impacts of a gravel mine, because it is not lost on me that a gravel mine has a very, very different use than what you've experienced in that area, very different use. And yet, there's a lot of state, you know, regional, local interests in making sure that extraction of those kinds of minerals are preserved and made possible. So there is that element, but it's not a crutch. It doesn't get to be the scapegoat that, oh, we can't do anything about it because of that, because certainly, as I'm looking through this, and... through this and considering the comments that have been made, the application that's been made, and the criteria, there's a lot more to it. And when it dials down to how it's being mitigated, I think that the, the berming, the larger-than-necessary buffers, the more stringent code that the City of Grand Junction applies to these kinds of uses within the city, that's not the same as what you may find in either previous areas that did not get exposed to these kinds of codes, or the more rural areas, it's, it'll yield a very different mitigation effort of that. There's further requirements regarding decibel limits and everything that goes along with it, that when I look at how is this applicant mitigating the impacts of his use for the surrounding area and the broader City of Grand Junction community, I tend to agree with staff's assessment as well, that the criteria has been met, and each and every one of them. I got confused on this, to be honest, and started wondering, does it really meet all of them? And the delineation for me, and I say this out loud for everyone's consideration, is when you start contemplating the off-site improvements, or things that are not applicable, or the equitable burden of this project, then you can start, I was able to start questioning whether or not all these criteria are met. When I look at the use that's being proposed, and the equitable mitigation of that, I think that the contributions with the road overlay to the, to the C and a Half Road, and all of the other elements that were, that were brought forth, and are established in the conditional use permit, certainly do that. On the bigger picture, again, from the community standpoint, the provision and the reason there's state law and otherwise for these kinds of resources, is because of how important they are to our costs of housing and the things that we want. And while, while cost of housing is an easy one to correlate, we mentioned earlier that the city's underway on a pretty significant Teds, and it's the Transportation Engineering Design Standards Manual update. And across the board, it is making wider sidewalks, wider road right-of-ways, more miles and miles and miles, that all require aggregate. Furthermore, the bike and pedestrian plan that was, you know, visioned in the comprehensive plan and recently adopted in a, in a policy, every element of that is creating wider and more and more miles of sidewalk paths and otherwise that require, that require aggregate there. So, when I look at our overall city and community plans, the proximity to those resources and making sure that we can extract them correctly and appropriately, and do our best to mitigate that, is of utmost priority. I think if I had a magic wand, I would, I would love to see the timeframes, you know, be more in the, in the, in the three to seven years rather than 10 years, but understanding those economics and watching gravel pits move through in this area, I don't have the crystal ball, and so it's very challenging there. So, that was my main hang-up, was how to maybe mitigate a timeframe, but after seeing everything that's been presented, and I do want to take a moment, and then I'll hush to applaud the staff and all elements, and I appreciate the county being here, and Parks and Wildlife being here, to be participating in this, but really, the data and the information that's been presented by both the applicant and staff, this, this was really, really challenging to be reviewing and contemplating, you know, doing the research before coming to the hearing individually. And the help of all this data and information that supports everything, so we don't have to say things like "I feel" and "I think," is just invaluable for, for community planning. So, thank you. I think that this does meet the, the criteria, and I'll look forward to moving this forward.
Thank you, Commissioner. Do we have other comments or questions? Commissioner?
Yeah, I'm going to just say that the presentation staff by an applicant was really good. However, I want the general public to know, when you show up, your voice is heard, and so I'll, you know, it's, it's very tough, because it's kind of looking at the kind of pros and cons, the checklists of, you know, what does a community benefit, what is going to benefit the neighbors or not? And so, I want to focus on those that showed up tonight. Properties are going to change, and that's, I mean, it seems like every time we sit on the dais, and the public shows up, that's their concern, okay? The impact of a development that's going on around them. And all too often, it is the impact of, you know, a bridge isn't wide enough, you know, to sustain that much traffic for a new development, the roads are not wide enough, you don't have the infrastructure of what it takes for this development to go in, with the expectation that the city is going to do that once they collect all the impact fees and all the fees associated with that development, that they're going to improve the road. There's a lot of faith that gets put into the city, as well as the developers, to make sure that those improvements are in. Right now, you're probably sitting there going, well, I don't have a lot of faith in the city to make sure that is done correctly, but time is going to have to tell. In regards to, you know, having some empathy for your neighbors in regards to a kid and their wellness, you know, there's no assurances regardless. I mean, that's what's really tough. You know, I'm a dad of two small kids, and I live in a cul-de-sac, there's not supposed to be any traffic, and yet, I still repeatedly get people cruise by my house at a speed too fast for me. So, where is the, where's the point there where we say this is safe or unsafe? I certainly hope with some things that are going on with, you know, the school district and reboundry issues, we can find ways to make sure that the public safety and wellness is, is better than what it is now. Now, with all that being said, I do think the staff, as well as the applicant, provided a presentation that, that exceeded my expectation in regards to painting a picture of what this is going to look like, and I think the benefit to the community is, is, is great. So, with that being said, I will be in favor of this reason.
Thank you, Commissioner. Do we have other comments or questions? Commissioner Scissors?
Thank you. I agree with a lot of what the other commissioners have said, but not everything. First of all, I agree that the presentations were excellent, and have a great appreciation for the members of the public who are brave enough to speak their piece, and I think their opinions need to be taken seriously. Like one of them said, how many of us would want a gravel pit next to our house? So, point well taken. I think most of the criteria are clearly met, but I'm a little hung up on the two that I mentioned earlier. I'm not sure where I'm going to come down on those in the end, because there are, as has been pointed out, a lot of balancing that we need to do. But just strictly from the criteria, I'm just a little concerned about that this would in fact, despite all efforts, incredible efforts, really, but still, at the end of the day, is it true that this will have minimal negative impact on the use and enjoyment of adjoining property? And also, on the same lines, is it really the case that all elements of the plan coexist in a harmonious manner with nearby existing and anticipated development? I really question those. So, that's it on criteria, but my main concern remains the possibility that this project will be completed, there will be trucks on the road, and the Riverfront Trail will not be completed. I think there's no question that the use of the Riverfront Trail is increasing all of the time, it's being marketed heavily, it's prioritized, it's connected with all of the riverfront development that's going on there, there's more apartments, there's more visitors, and the Riverfront Trail is, I mean, that's the calling card, that's where it all started, and that's, that is the, you know, prime aspect to the Riverfront development. And there's just no question that, that the usage of the Riverfront Trail is already substantial, and it's going to go up considerably. We're bringing e-bikes and e-scooters, and, and just more and more active people will be living there and using that. And right now, the only way to go east on the Riverfront Trail is on C and a Half Road. That doesn't address the concerns of the people that live there and have kids on the, on the road and stuff like that. I think those are related but separate issues, so I'm just focusing really on the Riverfront Trail usage, which right now is C and a Half Road, and, and is already considerable, but it's going to increase a lot. If the Riverfront Trail is completed, then I would agree that the majority of that concern goes away. There still might be some bikers that go down C and a Half, but they will certainly have the option of using the Riverfront Trail. But I think we've heard from both city staff and the applicant that the dates are uncertain, both dates are uncertain. It's uncertain when the Riverfront Trail will be completed, and it's also uncertain when the gravel operations will begin. And I don't know what we should do with uncertainty, but one option we have is conditions, and as already mentioned, there are conditions. And I think one of the members of the public, who is sitting up there, mentioned the possibility of putting a condition on that would say that the trucks shouldn't roll, shouldn't be allowed to roll until the Riverfront Trail is actually completed, not just on the wish list. So, I think I would be in favor of that condition. And if the staff, if the city and the builder, or the applicant are so confident of that, that should not present any burden to them. But that would be, that would be a guardrail or a protection for the public, so we don't end up with people wanting to use our precious Riverfront Trail and entering it and having one of those huge vehicles in their face on a very narrow road. Even though there will be some improved surface, it's still very narrow, and the prospect of facing one of those on a narrow road is, is not very pleasant. The other condition that I would put, which I think is an easy one, but just again, for guardrails, because Mr. Proll said that he felt, you know, they were going to kind of get right on it in terms of the improvements on C and a Half, but we didn't really get a date on that, and I don't think he could provide one. So, just to make absolutely sure that there's at least that level of improvements on C and a Half, I think that should also be a condition on starting operations of the gravel. And with those two conditions, I would support the applicant, the proposal.
Thank you, Commissioner. Looks like we have some more comments?
Thank you, Commissioner Scissors. I had some thoughts along the same line. First of all, I did compliment Mr. Austin on his presentation, and he's a professional, and he did, did do a great presentation. It's, and we often don't get a presentation by the applicant, it's all left up to the city staff, so I did respect that and appreciate that a lot. I will say, I think I appreciated as much or even more the community's input, and particularly the video presentation, that's definitely the most we've ever seen. That was impactful for me, to see those photos, just like Commissioner Seacrest said. And I'm also impressed at the level of knowledge and background and stats and data that the, that the community brought, so I definitely appreciate that. Like Commissioner Scissors, I think for me, three, there are four criteria, actually, I think three out of the four are pretty easily met by this application. The only one I'm concerned about is compatibility with the adjoining properties, and that is a tough one, and I think that's the most, that's the one that we have the most, I mean, it's, it's very subjective. I mean, we, there's not a lot, the other standards are all, I mean, they're, they're met, and they are. The one thing I will say is, I personally generally fall on the side of property owners and property ownership rights, and this property owner in this instance does have a right to develop something there and to do something there, and what they're asking is within their rights to ask for. I will say, looking at this from a compatibility point of view, if it's not developed as this, and I'm not saying it absolutely will be, but the pictures you showed of the apartments and the very high-density townhomes is what we would be asked to approve, and we actually have our hands tied in approving those kinds of projects. I mean, they will get the density that the comprehensive plan that provides for and outlines. And I do, I mean, I hear you, I think a gravel pit next door to you is something, but having an, you know, even a 200 unit on those 18 acres, 200 units, and the traffic, and the kind of congestion and noise and sounds and stuff that that kind of project brings, and I mean, I would say, for compatibility, I feel like that's less compatible, and I know that they do have the property rights to build that type of development there. I wish it was a shorter timeline, because, I mean, I think what the end, the end use is going to be of this property is probably going to be the least impactful for the neighborhood. I get that that's, I mean, I get it, I hear you, that it's 10 years away, 12 years away. I hope, I would also, I would definitely concur with Commissioner Scissors on the condition of the Riverfront Trail. However, I think we need to limit that to the trail that's on the property owner's property. I don't think they can be held responsible and accountable for another easement and another piece of the trail that needs to be built on an adjoining property. It sounds like there's still one property left that has to have the easements purchased or dedicated. And then, also, I would like to entertain a condition, I don't know how anybody else would feel about this, but if they are able to finish the extraction in less than 10 years, at that point, the reclamation would take place, and not give them the opportunity to wait those full 10 years, just to defer the costs and what it's going to take to do the reclamation. And if you, if you can get it done and get it out of there, there are going to be thousands of miles, I think, of aggregate needed in this community and built, I think it'll go through faster, hopefully, and if it does, let's get that, that they have to, you know, complete that reclamation process sooner. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Right, before we get too far along here, I had a question that perhaps staff could answer for me. We've had some discussion about the berm, the buffer, the landscaping, hours of operation, certain traffic count limitations, the timeframe for reclamation, which was just discussed. I don't see any of those things specifically referenced in the conditions that we've been presented with, and maybe I'm just missing them, are they part of the 112 CDRMS permit? Is that the anticipation, or where do we find those in this list?
Yeah, some, some of them are. I believe the reclamation, if they finish earlier, they would have to start the reclamation immediately. I don't think that they can wait. Maybe Mr. Austin could answer that question, but the other, the other things, I think, are good additions. They aren't necessarily included in how the, they have been written currently.
All right, thank you. To clarify, perhaps, so is it your understanding, Ms. Ashbeck, that it would be a requirement of the CDRMS permit to reclaim upon exhaustion of the mining?
I believe so, yes.
Okay. But these other things that we've been talking about are maybe not specifically required by the conditions listed?
Not that, you know, like that the trail actually exists before they roll trucks.
Oh, sure, no, I was talking about other things, like the berm construction, for example.
Berm construction, those, those are, if that's what's on their reclamation plan... BERM construction, those, those are, if that's what's on their reclamation plan and their operations plan, those two are addressed by the, by the CDR, the permit through the state.
Right, that's what I was trying to get clarification on. So those things, the BERM, the buffer, the landscaping requirements, the hours of operation, traffic count limitations, the timeframes, those are all addressed by the CDRMS permit, which is condition number one?
Yeah, the permit, as well as the operations plan that they have provided the city under, to be approved with the, the conditional use permit.
Okay, thank you. Sorry for the aside.
No, I think it's fitting, and before we leave that, the, the condition consideration about the trail construction being put forth, you know, condition number four indicates that money has to be put up through the DIA or some, some form of security so that it can be built, whether it'll be paid for by the applicant and built, whether it be the city that wants to build it or otherwise. And I think in prior, either prior reporting, or, or maybe at the, the prior hearing, there was conversation about how the design isn't done, so the ability to go and build it right now before that entire length is, is completed for design was a hurdle to that. So I think that condition that's in there was intended to, to provide kind of the same teeth and intention, but the methodology of the money has to be there, and then the actual design gets done, and then it can be either the city, the applicant, or the state that triggers the, the construction. So does that fit what your intentions or thoughts were, Commissioner Reckley, on that particular condition?
I thought that was Commissioner Scissors.
Well, I think he was referring just to the section on the property, and I was referring to the entire length for the purpose of getting pedestrians, keeping them off C and a Half Road, and that they would have safe passage. So I think there's kind of two different issues there.
Yeah, two, two separate.
Commissioner?
I just had a piggyback off of some of the questions that were just asked. So I understand that they'll be held to the code and the legality of the BERM and the hours. Does that also include the hour, the amended hours, like, that they have agreed to, or is that just the 6 p, 6 a.m. to 6 p.m. that they, like, legally have to abide by, or do they have to abide by what they have said they're going to do here tonight?
I would say they abide by what they said they will do.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify that.
With the flexibility, as they said, about some nighttime and weekend work if, if needed.
Okay. And then I'd like to just share kind of my thoughts on all of this. Thank you so much, all of you, for coming and sharing everything, and also to staff for a great presentation, and Mr. Austin, again, with all the other commissioners, just want to thank you for really taking the time to go through this with us, because that really helps us to make an informed decision, weighing that with what the public has brought to us and your responses, and we, I'm grateful for your honesty, or as much as we can tell about all that. This is a tough one, because of course, there are these big concerns. I have, I shared Commissioner Scissors' concern with not having a Riverfront Trail date specifically, and then we're gonna have all these more trucks on the road, and there's just not a lot of space for pedestrian traffic, and I don't know if that is a possibility, that we could make that a condition, but if it is, to have some more specific guidance or conditions in place to make sure that the pedestrian traffic is committed, has a safe place to be, instead of having to go C and a Half, I would support that as well as a condition. Additionally, I just want to say that, you know, it seems from what I'm hearing tonight as if we need to have a little bit more of development and a push in order to make some of these changes, and so approving this actually seems like it meets the community need, from my perspective, because as we grow and, and develop, then the, there is going to be more push to widen the road and, and to make some of these changes. The timing isn't great, this is tough, this is hard, because those things are not going to pair perfectly with our lives and our kids on the street, and I, I don't have a perfect answer for that, and I wish that we did, but we, we certainly don't, but I think this plan, with the options that are provided in our comprehensive plan, the conditional use permit here versus other options that may happen, may be a good option for our community going forward, and I'm hopeful that, that we can come up with some conditions that all of us could agree on to move forward with this.
Thank you, Commissioner. Other thoughts?
I will go. I don't have a ton to add. I, I tend to agree, the compatibility criteria feels a little squishy to me. I really appreciated all the presentations, like everyone else, reading this, and then coming here and, and listening, I feel like I was able to think about this differently and get different information, so I really appreciated that. When I started to think about compatibility, and I think this is what you were saying, in terms of, like, integration, it's not gonna be compatible, like, look and feel, you know, the same as, as you, the community, you all have, have developed yourselves, but just being able to, to utilize your space the way that you have, and I feel like the applicant kind of described that tonight, of the things that they're trying to put in place to allow that to happen, and C and a Half Road improvements, the Riverfront Trail coming, we don't know the timeline of all of those things, but I feel like some of those things are, are being addressed and mitigated, and, and in that regard, the compatibility maybe is, is being met that way, so I feel like the benefits outweigh. I wish the timing wasn't such an issue, I wish I knew all of that, but I think in the, in the long term, the, the benefits exist, are, the benefits that do exist are far greater.
Piggyback on those comments, I, I think we started, perhaps Commissioner Eller started with a comment about the state statute, and I am concerned that when we look at the, the elements of minimal negative impact and coexistence in a harmonious manner, the things that I find most disturbing, oh, with respect to those criteria, are the fact that it's a mining operation. And those seem to be impactful, and perhaps not harmonious with the surrounding neighbors, but to impose that sort of condition, on my analysis, I think would be contrary to the state statutory requirement, that we not interfere with the present or future extraction as we make an official action, or inaction, with respect to, to this consideration. So I think sort of further to the points we're making, those concerns are perhaps outside the scope of what we should be considering, or perhaps are even prohibited from a statutory standpoint from considering, and the question then would be, well, what, are steps being taken to make this impact minimal? And the applicant has certainly demonstrated many, many efforts along those lines, to go above and beyond what the minimum requirements would be for this activity, and to provide buffers and various protections for the neighbors to minimize that impact and to coexist in a harmonious manner with their, their nearby neighbors. I also sympathize with Commissioner, who mentioned sort of the overall community benefit here. And it's easy to get focused on truck traffic on C and a Half Road, but if this gravel pit is not on C and a Half Road, then there's gonna be truck traffic somewhere else, generating these same trips through our city to get to the same construction projects that need this aggregate, and if it comes from 30 or 60 or 90 miles away, that's heavier truck, truck traffic somewhere, whether it's going to be along C and a Half Road, where we know what the conditions are gonna be, or somewhere else where we can't control those things as well, or maybe can't control them at all. That's a significant concern, I think, from my point of view, with respect to the traffic conditions themselves. And I sympathize, of course, with the desire to understand better the timing, and to sort of force the coordination of timing of the C and a Half Road improvements, or the River Trail improvements, with the opening of this particular facility. But we have a couple of conditions proposed for that, conditions four and five, which, at least to the extent that they are within the reasonable control of the applicant, these conditions are out there, right? The applicant has to pay for the cost of the River, Riverfront Construction through the applicant's property, and provide a bond and development improvements agreement for that, and pay their share of the C and a Half Road improvements, all prior to the commencement of mining operations on the site. So those are the things that the applicant specifically can control, and beyond that, there are things that the city rightfully can and should control, the, the rest of the acquisition of the right-of-way, construction of the rest of the, of the pathway connections, and the improvements of C and a Half Road themselves. So those things seem to be the, the result of either long-deferred maintenance along C and a Half Road, or long-term planning from the city, which is sort of rightfully the city's burden. So at least from my point of view, those couple of additional conditions are addressed by this proposal as, as drafted. Anyway, those are my thoughts. Other comments, discussion, motions?
Thank all of you for your comments. I, I think that's maybe helping me think about this in a more specific way. The one concern that I don't think anybody's come up with an answer for is, what do we do if all of a sudden we're encouraging bicyclists and pedestrians to go on what was previously a pretty benign road, but now has large trucks on it, and it has a better surface, but it's no wider? So it's gone from what the bike and pedestrian planned world would call a stress level two to a stress level four, probably, three or four. Meaning, two meaning, most people, you know, are gonna be okay on it, which is what I would say it is now. It's not ideal, obviously, but most people don't stress out about riding on C and a Half. It's maybe not as good for pedestrians, but for bikes, anyway. But if you add big trucks that, on a narrow road, that, that takes the stress level up a couple of notches, for sure. So my initial thought was, okay, well, say, you know, you can roll the trucks when the bike path is completed from end to end, but the possibility was raised that maybe it doesn't have to be that, maybe the issue is not that the Riverfront Trail is completed, but just there is some reasonably safe way to get people to fill in that gap in the Riverfront Trail, whether that's completion of the Riverfront Trail or some other route. And, and so that, I would modify my condition that I was trying to add, to not be so specific that, that the safe route, that the Riverfront Trail is the only safe route, but that there should be a safe route that would be, like, basically a detour on the Riverfront Trail to get through that trouble section before, you know, before, to avoid that situation of having pedestrians and cyclists on a street that has gone from a level two to a level four.
I, I couldn't agree more with that sentiment of, hey, how do we make sure that this remains I'm challenged by where you're trying to go, and trying to put that into something here on two ways. One, I very much so think that this is not the burden of an individual property, I don't believe that that's equitable to create that whole stretch, and that it absolutely is the burden of the city and the county, in this case, to recognize that this is an issue, and that people are coming in and meeting all of the plans that we said we, we want them to meet, and now the city and the county has to do their part to make these roads go through, for the sake of providing an answer on an alternate route for the interim, when, if safety is, is the, at its core, it's not going to be a popular one, because it's a little ways out, and when you're riding, when I'm riding a bike or walking, the shortest distance is always nice, but there are certainly new and, and very pedestrian-friendly facilities along the Parkway and 29 Road that's a ways around, but that, that would be the answer, because there isn't an alternative one. Oh, gosh, I had a, I had a thought that I thought was worth mentioning, and it's drifting away from me. Apologies, if somebody else has something to say, please.
I'll, I'll respond to that. I think this is really great conversation, as usual, and, and I, I, I think I'm a bit persuaded by the fact that maybe that is a bit of an undue burden for the developer to have to wait to start their project on their land for something that the, that really should be the city and the county working harder to make sure that citizens are safe on the road, and how the pedestrians have a place to go. So I, I hope, I, these issues that you all have brought up and, and going through this, I hope that our voices are heard, and I just want that to be on the record, that this is an important issue that we need to address if we're gonna go ahead and approve this.
Commissioner Scissors used a word there where it's, it's hard, because I, I like where you're headed, but you used a word there, reasonable, you know, and I don't know if that baseline is just like diverting bicycle traffic away from the higher traffic areas and a lower-tier area, it's just like, how do we define, as commissioners and moving this thing forward or not, how do you, how do you just define reasonable? And so that's where I'd get hooked up on that, saying, how do we, like, how are we here to not put the burden on the applicant, because it's not his sole responsibility? And then how do we divert traffic so it's, it's reasonably safer than just making that jaunt down C and a Half Road? And so I, it's, that's where it's hard for me to, to come up with the, the baseline here of, like, which direction to go here.
I think that was the, the thought that escaped me, if I, if I may real quickly, is that, you know, reasonable, yeah, man, how do you define that? And the other one was, was safety. So like, what's the metric for that, right? How do we define what that is? And I think, looking at the, the speeds and the, and the traffic studies and whatnot that's going through there, if I'm on the, the Parkway over there by the mall, by bananas and whatnot, riding my bicycle along there, and the speeds that those larger trucks are going, I'm right with you, Ken, and that's, that's, that's not appropriate, that's uncomfortable. But without that metric, I can also say that, look, on, on Fifth Street, I, I'm walking, my kids are riding, walking those sidewalks and right, whatnot, right next to Fifth Street all the time, and there's huge trucks going by, but the speeds are lower, and then it's a little bit different setting, so I'm, I'm cautious to go too far there, because what is that metric relative to those standards that we have set forth and that the reports put forth have, have met those metrics?
Yeah, thanks for those comments. I, I would say, though, that the, the city has experience with rerouting bike paths, and, and so I don't think we have to decide, you know, what's, what's safe and what's reasonable, things like that. I, I would just leave that to the professionals in that area. We do have a, a, you know, transit, transportation coordinator position that is specific to bike and ped, and, you know, and again, there, there's experience there, and I would, I would trust that, I guess. And I appreciate everybody's comments that it's, it, it's hard to say what's the responsibility of the, the developer or the city sometimes, there's, there's obviously overlap. If the developer wasn't, in this case, bringing the trucks, we wouldn't have the problem. Does he have the right to just do that and tell the city and the taxpayer to, to make it safe and make it okay, or does it go the other way around? I, I don't really know that, but I think that's a, you know, legitimate question. But if, if, if the consensus is that it's not the burden of the developer to do that, it'd be the burden of the city to assure public safety. burden of the city to assure public safety for an approved project. Um, we haven't heard anything from the staff about how that would play out. Um, so we're just in the unknown there. We don't know if the city would say, yeah, you know, we'll just, just struggle through. It's not like it's flooded and they have to make a detour. It's just like gone, the safety level has just changed. Uh, would they decide to detour that or just say, hey, just, you know, tough it out and, and till the riverfront trail? I, I, I have no idea because we haven't been given any indication. This issue, you know, has been on the table for a month now. And, you know, here we are having the same discussion and we're not, we haven't gotten any input from the city as to how that would be managed. So, uh, you know, I just remain concerned about that. I don't know what the right remedy is.
I'll just say, I've been zooming in and out of the maps for the last 10 or 15 minutes. It's, I mean, it's landlocked is the problem. C and a half road is all, there's such big parcels and big things out there. There are very few roads and the very few that are just go up to Riverside Parkway. So that would be the rerouting and that's, if that's reasonable, I mean, the city can do that. But I still, I just, I don't support putting that in this, um, approval or motion or non-approval or whatever we all decide to do when our votes come down, to put it in the language of this, um, tonight on this application.
Well, is it, is it too late in the hearing to ask the city to weigh in on this?
No, I don't think so. If we have a question, let's get it answered.
So I, I guess my question would be, what, what would be the city's standard operating procedure in a case where a road that was previously considered, you know, s- safe enough, adequate facility, and then something changed about it and it was no longer, you know, really compliant with our, uh, safety standards for bike and ped? Would the city step up and say, okay, well, until things get fixed, we're gonna create a detour? Inconvenient, maybe, but, you know, actually a, a street design on, on D Road or the Parkway, whatever it's called there, um, would that just happen? Do, do I need to be worrying about this or would that just happen?
Commissioner Sc- Scissors, Trent Proll, again, Public Works Director. So I, I think we would move more towards signage and, and awareness there and alternative routes, you know, as, um, one of you mentioned, you know, the Riverside Parkway? I mean, we, we built that, um, you know, with a detached path, you know, all the way along, um, you know, 15 years ago. Um, and it actually meets today's, or the proposed TED standards that are coming up here, here soon. It's a half mile to the north, um, gets you over to 29 Road, which has bike lanes heading south, not to the future TED standards, but to the TED standards of the day when we built it. Um, and actually have restriped all that to, to have a five-foot bike lane plus a foot and a half gutter, um, in through there. So, um, anyway, is it, is it the, the perfect detour, you know, out and around? No, but, you know, we don't have a perfect route, you know, today. So, and no matter how many bike lan- or how many bike paths I make, um, I still can't get the roadies on there. You know, the roadies are gonna be out there in the middle, whether there's a bike lane or not, they're coming down Grand Avenue. We don't have a bike lane east of First Street on bike, on, on Grand Avenue. That's where the roadies are gonna be. So each one of us has a different comfort zone of, of what we, of what we're gonna be there. I mean, if, if we've got small kids or kids four, five, six, seven, eight, I'm gonna have them on the sidewalk. You know, I'm gonna probably be up there on the sidewalk, you know, in, I mean, going up, um, Fifth Street. Someone, someone had referenced Fifth Street. And yeah, I'm, I'm gonna be, you know, out in the bike lane. My kiddos are up there on the bike, on the sidewalk. So it varies comfort level based on age, ability, how old your kids are, um, and just, you know, how often have you been out in traffic and how comfortable you are with that. But, yeah, we're gonna, I, I would say if it became a safety, safety issue, which honestly, again, as I, I, I don't believe it will be, um, just due to the low volumes that are relatively out, out there. Um, um, but yeah, we would sign it as alternative route, um, you know, going up to the Riverside Parkway and, and back down on 29 Road, where you do have the bike lanes and the concrete and, um, and can get underneath, um, get underneath the, the 29 Road Bridge to get over there to all the trail heading further to the east.
Trent, just real quickly, is there a, I, I know when you go down C and a half to 29 Road and then you head south to do that underpass, there's also a sidewalk there because the bike lane is not very wide and the traffic is ferocious on 29 Road and... Pardon me? Yeah, yeah, yeah. That's another issue. But, and I, and I'm a, you know, one of those roadies that'll just ride on anything, but I don't wanna ride on that bike lane on 29. But I just go on the sidewalk. It's fine. Um, do you know if there's a sidewalk from D Road to C and a half on that same section there?
From D Road to C and a half? Yes. We have side, curb gutter sidewalk that the, the city and the county put in, um, there in 2008, I believe.
So there's a sidewalk and a bike, and a bike lane?
Correct.
So if someone doesn't wanna deal with being out on the road there, they can just go on the sidewalk?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Other comments or questions, discussion?
Let me ask if we're, um, but I'm prepared to make a motion, but I wanna make sure that I'm not dismissive of, of, of anything that was kinda put forth. Um, I'm, on this topic of kinda linking the completion of the whole section of trail, whatnot, I'm not prepared to make a motion that includes that. Um, and so we can move through that process if there's a desire otherwise. And, and then Sandra, on the section about, you know, getting the trail provided that you had mentioned maybe contemplating, um, a, a condition about, um, did you agree that that's satisfied through the existing conditions or do we still need to contemplate a condition there?
No, I agree that it's satisfied currently.
So then I feel like there was another condition that was thrown out and contemplated and forgive me, I can't remember.
I, I had added that the, um, proposed improvements to 29, uh, to C and a half be completed, uh, prior to operations. So we didn't, you know, again, it's a timing issue, but that one seemed a lot more certain. And I don't really know if that's necessary, but it did seem like there was at least some question. Um, so I...
As much as it seems appropriate, um, I would not be prepared to make that, that condition on there only because it would hold the project hostage until such time as both the county and the city got their, their share of that put together, whereas this, the, the conditions already require the applicant to do his fair share. So that's my concern about that. Um, so I, I'm prepared to make a, a motion that fairly closely mimics the suggested motion, but, um, certainly the opportunity to add conditions if there's enough that feels otherwise. We didn't have any other conditions kinda floating out there, right?
No, I don't think so.
Chairman, on the C and a half road gravel pit to establish a conditional use permit for mining excavation operation, file number CUP 2021 616, I move that the Planning Commission approve the CUP with the findings of fact and conditions listed in the staff report.
Thank you, Commissioner. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
A second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. That motion will pass 7 to 0. All right. I believe that brings us to the conclusion of our meeting this evening. Perhaps Ms. Galehouse will let us know if there's anything else we need to turn our attention to.
There's none.
All right. Um, well, in that case, do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. We are adjourned. For those who might be sticking around for the exciting zoning boarding of, Board of Appeals hearing, which is scheduled to start right after this, we'll be taking a 10-minute break in order to reset our cameras. Thanks, everyone.